All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the Village Council February 9th regular meeting 2029, 6:30 jam, my show, 6:31. And I show we have a quorum currently. Bob has joined us, he's remote, so we have a quorum. We're only missing right now is Andy, and he's on his way, so we'll announce when he gets here. So, before we proceed, I'd like to get a motion to allow council members to participate remotely.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any things we want to add, or change, or remove?
I do not.
Jamie? Bob?
No, sir.
All right, moving forward, we'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
No, because I'm going to talk about that in a section. I'll share with you. So I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Little details of life, you know, approving. So next up, we have pleasurable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't know if it's a contentious issue, saying pleasurable allegiance, all of 11 seconds. We have public comment period. Do we have anyone that has signed up? If someone could check. And if you are speaking, or your reminder, just like a note to write the record statement, Andy is now joining us. Andy, we just said the pleasurable allegiance, so you haven't missed much.
It is 9:00. It's 6:33.
So, do you have anyone?
They have one public comment.
Okay, looks like we have somebody. So just a reminder, Kim, if you want to take a listen, we give three minutes. State your name, your address, where you live, and feel free to share with us concerns, or comments, or whatever, and keep it clean, and we give you three minutes. So I have first Kurt Moore. That must be you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you can stand up, or sit right there and talk to us, or whatever, and just so you know, we're, so the audience, our microphone is here.
Project yourself.
Pop loudly.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
So I'm Kurt Moore, I'm from 327 Elm First Drive here in Marvin, the Barclough neighborhood. I think some people in our neighborhood may have been in contact with the mayor, or with some people on council regarding a concern about potential multiple houses in that neighborhood being leased to migrant workers. To be clear, this doesn't have anything to do with ethnicity, nationality, or anything of that nature, it's more of a zoning issue. Just want to make you guys aware of it, I think American Homes for Rent, who has the neighborhood and is leasing the homes, has been contacted, they may be dealing with it. But just from kind of a heads-up standpoint, that is going on, we think there's been a couple vans bringing them back and forth, and a couple charter buses, I think dropped them off about Sunday morning. I personally observed probably 20 to 25 persons rolling travel bags, like we see in an airport, come down the street, confer, like they were looking for an address, and then take back up towards the top of the street, lost sight of them from there, but my neighbors told me from there out that they kind of dispersed to the five different homes in the neighborhood. So that's all I have, just want to make you guys aware of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Full disclosure, I happened to be in your neighborhood, and just driving around to see how it was going, and stuff, and stopped and talked to a person there, and she did share with me that information, that concern, which I've shared, so we don't know if there is anything that we can be done, but we certainly will be looking into it, and I assured her, I got another call from her today, we will be looking at it for that matter. But I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and we'll let you know whatever we can do, if anything at all. So thank you for that. And I think that's all I have on the public comment period.
Can I, you can ask?
Do we have anybody out in the audience there that if you want to put your microphone on, and I'll recognize you? Don't see anyone.
Yeah, everybody's microphone went off.
Yeah, okay, well, all right, so I'm seeing nobody there, we're going to move on to the next, next up on item B, presentation, recognition of service to Nancy Schneberger, and I think she is here. So, welcome Nancy, and this is probably something that I think we were going to do earlier, but with COVID and everything else, and we wish we were able to do a better send-off, and that sort of thing, but I do have a plaque, I'd like to read it for the community, and then allow council members who have interacted, or even, you know, or council members who have interacted, to share whatever they would like, or also staff members, so. But the plaque reads, to Nancy, "The Village of Marvin council and staff would like to recognize and thank Nancy Schneberger for her years of service as tax collector for the village, 2011 to 2021. Some people naturally just bring joy wherever they go, and Nancy is one of those people. Every day spent working with Nancy was a day of joy, kindness, and laughter. She has always been the smiling jovial face that Marvin residents have become accustomed to seeing annually. It will be hard to replace such a bright-spirited and kind-hearted person for the face of Marvin. Nancy understands the importance of customer service. She has always treated residents with courtesy and respect. She has always displayed a good attitude and a helpful spirit. Her diligence in collecting taxes and helping to manage the office will be missed. She has been an integral part of the village staff family. We wish her a well-earned and relaxing retirement." So, I will say, I'll present this to you, I will say, knowing Nancy for as long as I've been the mayor, and her being a part of this, usually tax collectors, if you go back in the biblical days, and I see her insurance every Sunday when we were going to mass, that tax collectors were frowned upon, and I will tell you, that is not the case with her, and I completely understand that your reasons for moving on and retiring, but we've completely enjoyed having you as a staff member. You've been just a joy every time I would come in and just to chat with, whether it's for a few minutes, or seeing you at mass. So thank you for your service, and I will open it up to any staff member or council who wants to share anything they'd like to share.
Nancy, I'd like to echo what the mayor said, we've worked together for many years now, between my service with PRG and council, and you've always been a bright face every time I walk in here, very, very accommodating, and I really appreciate what you've done, and I do wish you a very, very good retirement. I know you deserve it for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll say the same thing, coming in as a new person, you always had a smile on the face, you always made me feel welcome, and I know that you do that to many other people that come in, so thank you, I hope you absolutely thoroughly enjoy retirement, and that's all, what we all strive for.
That's right.
And you've crossed the finish line, so congratulations and enjoy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, everybody said it, Nancy, thank you so much, I mean, you've been a joy to work with, and I appreciate everything that you have done for me, and, you know, when I started, and you were just so accommodating and welcoming, and just, you know, made the transition so much easier, so enjoy your family, enjoy your retirement, and know that you will be missed here at the village. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Nancy, I was going to say that being retired, going across the finish line, you're going to really enjoy it. Now train your husband to bring you coffee every morning.
I can do that.
Thanks, Bob, go ahead.
I just wanted to say something real quick, thank you Nancy for all your years of service here. I've been in local government for over 10 years now, with the Village of Marvin for three years, and I can honestly say that I've never seen anyone that had a higher collection rate as you, so I do appreciate your time. It's going to be hard to replace that, but I hope we find that.
And I will say this one final note, I said, I would normally give you a big old hug, but I'll take a rain check on it, when all this thing clears up and stuff, and we stay safe, and I again wish you the very best, and thanks for being here for this, and more importantly, being here for the community over the 10 years you've been here, so thank you.
Staff, want to say anything?
Yeah.
Sure. Nancy, what can I say? We shared an office for months, we could not stop laughing at each other's stories, you've always made my job here bright, and staff would like to present you with this old bag of gifts. Now, if you're keeping it, you've got a little bit.
Yay, Nancy!
Anyone else?
Anybody on camera or staff? Staff, anybody on staff?
Go ahead.
Yeah, oh.
Yay, Chris and Julie are clapping.
Long kisses on there. Good to see you guys.
I just want to say, if I may.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, I miss you already, and I'm just working double time to get stuff out of your head and onto paper. You know so much stuff, so I already miss you, and you've been wonderful, thank you.
You better come have lunch with us.
Yeah, I am, just got to set it up.
At the right time and all that, so, absolutely, so.
Thank you so much, I have really enjoyed my time here. Everybody's been super nice, everybody that I've worked with, which has been a number of councils, a number of staff, managers, it's been very rewarding, and I really have enjoyed it. It's time to move on, I want to be with my grandson.
Absolutely, we understand that, and the tenure you've had here, you've been through the good, the bad, and everything, and it was good to have someone to chat with about it at times, too, so that understood.
But I have really enjoyed it, and looking forward to the next stage in life.
Well, we are too, and we pray that that all goes well, and just enjoy family, that's the time to do it, so enjoy, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye Nancy.
Bye Nancy. All right.
Bye guys, I'm there.
How are you doing? Chris, they're all.
All right, so next up on the agenda, we have Development Finance Initiative, DFI, presentation on economic feasibility of Marvin Heritage District.
They're on the agenda, so I'll just introduce them. Bye Nancy, thank you. So DFI was hired to do a feasibility study on the concept of a low-density downtown district, they've concluded their study, and they're here tonight in order to present to you their findings in a presentation. Here we have Eric Thomas, Amelie Bailey, and I think I saw Rory as well, but that's their team, and they'll probably introduce themselves, their organization, and just take it away.
There, hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thumbs up, okay, awesome. All right, thank you for having us here tonight, we're excited, getting started, I'll share a screen here in a minute of our PowerPoint, but enjoyed working with Rowan, obviously got a great, you all have developed a very interesting, fascinating vision for village center, and we're happy to be here to discuss our findings from the analysis. So let me share my screen here. Let's see, full screen. All right, full screen, did it work?
Yep.
All right, thanks Emily, I see you on the screen. Hey, I'm Eric Thomas, Senior Project Manager of Development Finance Initiative, we also have Rory Dowling, Development Advisor with DFI, as well as Amelie Bailey, who's our Development Analyst, so all three of us have been heavily involved in analyzing the feasibility of your village center concept. So just to have a brief agenda for what we plan on presenting to you tonight, I want to give you first an overview of DFI, who we are, what we do, and talk about the project overview, obviously you are very well versed in the village center concept, but we want to talk about what our role at DFI is in evaluating the feasibility for the village center. Want to talk about the village center development programs, so giving you an overview of obviously the density scenarios that we evaluate for your village center concept, talk about our development feasibility assessment, so coming from a private development perspective, what is the feasibility for those density scenarios, and then provide some recommendations, and then leave it open for a discussion at the end, questions in discussion, to essentially pose questions to us, and allow us to answer any questions we have regarding the analysis that we perform. Sorry, there's a little frozen there. All right, DFI, for those that aren't familiar, DFI is a nonprofit program based out of UNC Chapel Hill School of Government, so we work with local governments all across the state on typically downtown revitalization projects, but we've also been working in sort of the neighborhood revitalization scope. So local governments would come to the school of government, and oftentimes they would ask, what can we do with our downtown, we have an abandoned bill, and the school of government can provide those sort of legal authorities for local governments to partner with private developers on downtown revitalization projects focused oftentimes around real estate development. But the question that often arose after that, can we do this kind of project, was, should we? And that's how DFI essentially got our origins, was helping local governments evaluate the feasibility from the economic perspective of, does this make economic sense from the public side, and also the private development side, for a public-private partnership around village stake development? So DFI, as Rory had mentioned, we were hired in November 2020 to evaluate the financial feasibility of the Marvin Village Center concept. So we did to essentially evaluate the feasibility of the village center concept was determine market rate of rent in this area, that's from a regional and also comparable approach for other village centers in the area. We looked at local and recent land sales, determined potential acquisition prices of land. We input development cost assumptions, current development cost assumptions that we get from, one, our development advisors on our staff at DFI, who are working in real estate development projects across North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, but also do outreach to general contractors to understand if our pricing is in line with what the current market suggests the costs are. And then what we also do is, we work closely with Rowan and village staff, determine infrastructure needs to support the project, so those public infrastructure costs like water main lines, streetscape improvements, sidewalks, curb butters, those kinds of things, we have input from the village staff to ensure that the program isn't just looking in from a private development perspective, but also evaluating those public components that would be necessary in order to support the private development that you all have drawn up. So the DFI assessment approach, what we did, and working with Rowan and village staff, was essentially evaluate three density scenarios, a low, medium, and high density scenario, and I'll get into those here in a minute, what those scenarios were, those densities. Village provided development standards for open space, parking requirements and buffer requirements, obviously there's a vision of low density or low medium high density, based on what the sort of definition is of that, but also understanding the buffer requirements and open space that you all would like to achieve in your village center. We segmented it into an east and a west node, and we also broke it down between the residential and the commercial aspects, so that we could evaluate, one, the commercial performance, and also the residential performance, but we could see which nodes maybe perform a little bit more feasible from a private development perspective, to understand what are those limitations or potential constraints making the project financially feasible? And then what we also assessed was that parking infrastructure and open space costs at this point are all allocated to the private developer. We'll touch on why we did that, at this point is, you know, one thing that the town, the Village of Marvin could do potentially to make project financially feasible is partner with private developers, build some of the infrastructure to support the private development, and we'll talk about that later on with that marketing. So just kind of overall village center development summary at this point, just kind of framing the rest of the conversation before we jump into a ton of numbers, and sorry, I'm going to bogey down on a bunch of numbers in this presentation. What we found, and there's three development scenarios, that really they were constrained for the commercial, and also the single-family residential sort of concept in most of the scenarios, primarily due to the allowable maximum densities as proposed, but also the open space development standards. Now, there's ways to sort of think through how to potentially make it more feasible, and I'll touch on those. But the private development components that we evaluated in the three development scenarios, they do offset the cost of the public infrastructure that's needed to support the project under a 20 years or timeframe, evaluating the impact in terms of taxed revenue generated from the project over 20 years, offset those costs of the public infrastructure. Okay, we'll jump into the summary slides here coming up. The program overview, you all have seen the village center concept, the sort of east node and the west node, but here are the really the density scenarios that we evaluate, low density, medium, high. Low is .8 residential units per acre, all the way to the high at 1.2 residential units per acre. Commercial floor area ratio, FAR, is between .15 and up to .25 high density. We evaluated some buildings that would be two stories, essentially ground floor, retail, and upper story office, split that between 50% for the commercial space. And then we evaluated open space percentages between 35% open space required in low density, down to 25% open space required in the high density scenario. And then we applied as sort of a standard real estate development number of one parking space for 250 square feet of commercial space, to be applied across all development scenarios. And so we're looking at, based on those development standards, here is the program that essentially, once you filter in all the area that you have to work with, the east and the west node, here's the program that filters out. So the east scenario, it ranges between 10 and 20 residential units in this, in sort of that form that's delivered here, between 84,000 and 147,000 square feet of commercial space, and then about that three and a half acres of open space as part of the development scenario. And then you can see that the significant amount of parking increase between the low density and the high density, between 313 and 525 parking spaces required to support the commercial uses, as in the east phase. With looking at the west phase, obviously a lot more heavy, heavily focused towards residential uses. In low density, 64 residential units, up to about 100 residential units in the high density scenario. A commercial space, a lot less compared to what's going on in the east node, between 51,000, 87,000, and that does account for some adaptive reuse of some of your structures along your town road currently. And then ranging between the low density, about 16 acres of open space, down to about 14.2 in the low density, in the high density area, and then you can see the parking space is required to support the commercial, ranging from 168 to 309 in the high density scenario. So those are the programs that were evaluated, to essentially evaluate private development potential and feasibility. And so now we're getting to the commercial feasibility. So in the east scenario here, this is the commercial aspect, so thinking about the retail and those office uses. In the low density, it's about $18.8 million of private development, the high density up to $30.7 million. This is a table in the bottom that essentially shows those rates of return that investors and developers would get based on the low, medium, and high scenarios. What we have on the right is what a target, so this target is essentially what developers would look for when evaluating the feasibility of a project. So what you're seeing here in terms of the IRR, the internal rate of return for these projects, going from a low scenario up to a high density scenario, may not mean those target rates that a private developer would look to achieve when evaluating the feasibility of a project. Again, this also factors in, and we'll talk about this a little later on, the current taxes of Marvin, but also on top of it, an MSD tax, which does impact the overall performance of a private project, but not greatly. As I mentioned, the constraints on this project is really in terms of the density and the open space requirements as part of the projects. When evaluating the commercial components on the west side, so essentially 2, 3, 5 up here, again, we're looking at a low density scenario of about $11.5 million of projected private investment, up to a high density scenario of $18.3 million. Again, when you look at these overall IRRs, ranging from the low density scenario of 5.2% up to a high of 7.6%, again, not meaning those target thresholds that should be developed and look for in evaluating the project. Now, how do you make this project potentially more financially feasible from a private development perspective? One would be to, A, increase allowable densities and/or decrease the open space requirements, because land and the site costs, site operation costs, they remain relatively constant across all three of those development scenarios. So those land costs aren't being spread a lot across the larger programs, so a higher density, more program, a more financially feasible project from a private development perspective. And something that also could make the project more financially feasible would be assessing the opportunity for private, public-private partnerships, really around infrastructure. So we allocated the cost for parking and open space all on the private development perspective, but those are costs that essentially go into public buckets, and then essentially take those out of the private side for some portion, and then offset the cost for the private developer. When you get into structuring those deals as part of this project, just provide higher level recommendations for how to potentially make this project more feasible. Let's look at the commercial development components. Now evaluating the residential components, the single-family residential for the village center concept. So the east phase and the west phase, when combined, you're looking at roughly about 120 residential units total in program, split across the two phases. As I mentioned earlier, about 20 residential units in the high density scenario in the east, and about 100 room units spread across one, six, and four upper west nodes. All right, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of numbers here on this screen. The big takeaways are essentially, see my cursor here, the profit margin at $200 per square foot, which is the sale price. You see that the east node here, as Rory, does have positive and significant profit margins based on what the costs are to develop them, meaning you have a financially feasible project here for the east residential development, under the low, medium, and high density scenarios. When looking at the west node, you see in the low density scenario, not the profit, target profit margin that you would want to achieve, but as you go up in higher density, 3% in the medium, and up to 7% in the profit margin when you sell a property for $200 per square foot of those homes. So you can see, as you increase density, you are getting to those profit margins pushing up towards those numbers that a developer would want to see when evaluating a project. So the key opportunities when assessing the financial feasibility for the residential perspective, would again, one, increase the allowable densities and/or decrease the open space requirements. Right now, the west node, what we evaluated, the east node is performing, it has those returns it would look for when evaluating a financial project, when sourcing a project, but the west node right now has the challenges associated with, the significant amount of open space associated with having to acquire in order to get those returns. So you're acquiring a lot of land, to essentially for buffers and open space, but you're not being, you're not able to build on it, you're paying for the land, but again, you're not able to capitalize on building on that. Something that could make this project more financially feasible from that private development perspective for the single-family residential, would be, again, the village playing a role in open space, perhaps there's a need for public open space in this area of the village as sort of a parts and rent massive plan. So that open space could be met from a village perspective as a public amenity, public asset, publicly funded component, to one, provide the open space, but not have it be necessarily in the private development bucket in terms of costs. So we're going now, so we did the feasibility from both the commercial and the single-family residential perspective, but find out the public infrastructure needed to come in to support those development components. So with looking at the public investments, we evaluated the need for streets, streetscaping along the roads to support the village center, so that's curbs and gutters, road paving and sub in certain portions. Obviously, you've invested in traffic circles in certain portions, sidewalks in certain portions, but really right now, it's mostly a two-lane road without any curb or gutter or significant infrastructure. And so we evaluated the deeper water, sewer, stormwater, plus streetscaping, sidewalks, street furniture, tree planting, lighting. We got estimates for that at $1,000 per linear foot for those development costs. We understand that you all need two water main extensions, each of about $100,000 for roughly each at 700,000 feet each. Commercial parking, we didn't have put that bucket yet into that public, we into the private, those are all of the private development costs, not in the public side. And then another assumption that we wanted to include, but not necessarily bring into our analysis for the purpose of this analysis, was the future development of the village hall, which we were formed out of, is coming in about $1.8 million. So we're looking at those scope items, we have in purple dashed line, the water main extensions, roughly 700 linear feet here, and roughly 700 linear feet here in the east phase. The west phase is roughly 1,600 linear feet of road to essentially, you know, new streetscaping around the commercial aspects, and then you have new road infrastructure, street sidewalks, streetscaping around the commercial on the east side, going all the way down, up, road here. So that's roughly 3,500 linear feet of road in this section, and 1,600 linear feet here on the west. We're looking at the overall, this is the east phase here, reestimate those costs in terms of the road infrastructure and the water main, at roughly $3.7 billion, which is roughly 3.7. The incremental real estate tax generated on the east side, that's the combination of those. of both commercial and residential. In the low scenario, over twenty years, it would generate two hundred and forty thousand dollars. In a medium scenario, medium density scenario, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and at the high density scenario, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So that's taking the six cent tax that you currently have in the village margin, over twenty years, based on those two development programs that we analyzed. The total impact of that is, you know, you can see the numbers here, between, if you're trying to offset the cost of the public infrastructure needed to support the project, you're still ongoing generating roughly between two hundred and four hundred thousand dollars over twenty years of the taxes. But applying an MSD tax, as Rohit has communicated to us that you've been discussing about, a twenty-five cent MSD tax to the entire district, you could apply essentially, uh, you can see the differences over twenty years now of what that could generate, up to one point three million dollars over twenty years for the commercial, and roughly four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over twenty years for the residential. For this section of town, based on the thirty-five hundred linear feet of road infrastructure to support the development, you're still not breaking even in terms of the infrastructure costs and the taxes that can be generated from that private development. Uh, but when you factor in the west side, you do break even. I'll touch on it here in a minute. So in the west side scenario, there's less infrastructure needed to support the development. You only had fifteen hundred linear feet of road and a seven hundred linear foot water main extension. Those estimated costs come at about one point eight million dollars. The incremental real estate tax generated, and without the MSD applied to it, you're looking at in a low density scenario, about four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, up to the high density scenario, about seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So you can see the total impact without any MSD here. Still, uh, in the red here, we're looking at the, the ability to offset those infrastructure costs needed to build the project. Uh, but when you layer in the twenty-five cent, uh, MSD tax for both the commercial and the residential, you can start to see the significant impact of the taxes, the taxes that are generated from the, the private development over the course of twenty years. So, when you look at the ability to sort of offset the costs in terms of infrastructure in twenty years, uh, the overall project has generated, uh, over two million dollars of net financial impacts to the town, uh, compared to the infrastructure needed to support it. Um, and again, that's just factoring the, the road infrastructure and the water main. I wanted to include here essentially just a, a table, we don't need to go over this all now, I've run through those numbers, but if we do want to come back and discuss, we do have a synthesis table that goes in catalogs, the IRRs versus the net financial impact for both the east and the west scenarios. So, jumping into our recommendations, or how to make this project potentially more feasible from a private development perspective, or things that the village could consider when evaluating the village center concepts is, one, reconsider density allowances and our open space requirements. The greater the density, uh, either A, in, less open space required, it helps offset those land costs and the value of the land when factored into the overall financial models that we developed. Two would be to consider a phased approach to the village center. So, we showed you the breakdown between east and the west nodes in terms of infrastructure costs. That could reduce those infrastructure costs by focusing on one, one node versus the other from a phased approach. It can also reduce the full cost of, of this, of the site risk, environmental, stormwater grade, all those costs for site work have to be spread out over a large area. Um, and then also, um, I've kind of touched on it throughout the presentation, but consider other public participation strategies, infrastructure investments in parking and open space. Those can, can, uh, enhance the feasibility and the overall performance of projects. Uh, and structured appropriately, there's a sort of a win-win from, from both the private development perspective as well as the public. So, I'm gonna pause here and open it up for questions, comments from you all, and, and hopefully this information was informative for you all.
While starting, you have any good news? Without raising taxes? Um, no, just, it, it, you talk about acquisition costs and, and also public-private partnership. Um, you know, the way it's viewed, and with some people here, we got involved with a public-private partnership, um, we've been told that that can open up Pandora's box on the legal side. Have you seen that typically, um, an issue with doing public, or I, I guess, how do you get around that, where, where you kind of are able, you can never avoid lawsuits, I get that, but in the sense that we did a public-private partnership, there may be some pushback or some legal concerns with that, is what we were told.
Mm-hmm. I would say that, uh, how DFI, I mean, we're basically, we're just full of government, we, we haven't paid on behalf of local governments. We are resourced with local government. We would, and, and, and there's plenty of successful case studies for public-private partnerships where, you know, uh, legal ramifications are Pandora's box, uh, and significant challenges up. So I do have a lot of echo right now, the overall presentations, maybe there's someone else, okay, there we go, much better now. Um, so I, I believe that public-private partnerships can be structured and in, in legal manners that don't open up those, again, diverse pots of problems and, and challenges, and can be structured in a way, one, where it, it's, as I mentioned, that's sort of win-win, where the, the private developer comes on to realize the public's goals, and the public gets the benefit of, of having a, a, you know, the private developer has, has a great partner to, one, potentially offset those development costs and, and make the project financially feasible from a point of being able to get investors and lenders in to do the project.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, I mean, there are plenty of examples where P3s do end up, uh, coming up against legal battles, but that's typically because the local government, you know, hasn't gone about it in a way that's by, by the state statutes. And so, you know, if we were to remain involved and you all pursue this project, we would make sure that we're working with, um, our, our colleagues at the school of government to, um, and our executive director, Tyler Mulligan, to, to make sure you all are, are going about this in a way that's, um, that's legal, of course.
And Eric, you talked about MSD, go ahead, sorry. Sorry, Eric, you talked about MSD taxes, and there was a number of twenty-five cent put on that. Is that an average number, or is that a number that we picked, or is that, do you see that for commercials commonly across the state, or is it higher, lower, or why, why did we choose twenty-five? And I, I know you had always talked about it, I didn't know there was a, a number assigned to it, help me out with that.
Sure, sure, happy to help you out. Uh, that number was something that we, we evaluated with village staff, just come up to sort of a, a number that, one, set the criteria for this project, wanted to show what it would take to get to those, those returns of, of making a, a, you know, um, a net financial impact of, of positive when compared with the infrastructure needed to support the development. What we oftentimes see with MSDs, and this is sort of maybe backwards from what we've done, what we evaluated for the village center, is a smaller MSD when communities have a larger tax rate. So, say a, a town has a fifty cent tax rate, you might see a ten cent MSD tax applied to it. When you're, when you're looking overall, have the, the village centers who are to factor in, hey, the six cent tax that you currently have, and a twenty-five, and a thirty-one cents overall for this area, is still a lot lower than we see in all, a lot of communities across North Carolina, uh, you know, as just sort of their general tax rate. Now, I, obviously, the six cent, uh, tax rate is something that makes the community very attractive, um, and something that you obviously don't want to have to, uh, you know, I don't know what the appetite is for discussing that, but it is a low tax rate when we see it, and so we oftentimes see it sort of the reverse of a higher base tax rate with a, you know, ten, fifteen cent MSD tax on top of it. I don't have any technical, the average MSD across the state is, but...
And that would only go...
Yeah, we did this a few years back, if you took an average of the MSDs across the state, you'd find the most MSD taxes fall within the, the eight to twelve cent range.
Okay.
Hey, this is Christine, I'm the manager here, I just wanted to mention too, that one of the things that we had looked at at a staff level was the feasibility for all the taxpayers as well, because they're currently used to a, a six cent tax rate, and we knew that this was going to be a twenty-five cent overlay on those properties. So, that was one of the other areas that we looked at to try to reduce the, the total financial impact to those, uh, taxpayers initially.
And especially if I can add on to that, I mean, what happens, I assume zoning changes, that, that MSD only comes into place when it get, the land gets developed as a commercial, if you will, property, and that's what goes into place, or does it...
Well, it just rezoned, right?
Is it, once it's rezoned, it's, it's all the additional taxes put on them, I assume?
Likely do that at the same time, the simultaneously, the rezoning and the MSD.
So there's been a lot of discussion about, just to clarify that question, there's been a lot of discussion about, um, properties not having the MSD overlay tax until they're actually developed, and I think that's been an inaccurate assumption. To my understanding, the MSD overlay is assessed at the time of rezoning, so it doesn't matter if the property is developed or not, they would still pay that twenty-five cent overlay, is that correct?
If it's not, yeah.
Okay. And that's why you see, uh, if you go back to your slide where you have the total residential and commercial, um, go back one more? Yeah, right there, you'll see the twenty-five cent, go back one, oh, I'm sorry, fast forward one, on the west. The residential is much higher than the commercial based off of, yeah, you're right, you're good, yeah. That residential is...
Right, and that's something, and that's something you would want to consider, is the residents in these single-family homes in the village center area being taxed at a higher rate than the residential surrounding the area. So typically the MSD, and, and I'm not a lawyer here, so I can get to the specifics of, of what it has to be applied for, but typically, it's for services, for amenities, or infrastructure to support through the district itself. So, um, I think, you know, there's, there's special assessment areas, whether MSD is the exact approach, or a special assessment instrument, or other tools, uh, you would want to consider that as, if you're going to put this tax on top of those residents for those commercial uses in this area, what special services are you providing to that area that, that may, that adjusted by that extra twenty-five cents?
So, the, the extra twenty-five cents will be assessed to each residential unit in addition to our normal six cent tax?
Each residential unit in the district.
In the, in the district, in the district.
In the district, in the district.
Yeah.
Right, not everyone.
But still, that's, okay.
So you would have to know, if you were to buy a house in this district, that your tax rate is actually a total of thirty-one cents.
Thirty-one cents.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
And it's at the time of rezoning, just want to make sure that you understand that, okay?
It's just nothing hidden, I mean, it's just...
No, no, just, that's just not how, I mean, I, yeah...
And we're not spreading that out amongst...
No, no, I got it.
Everyone.
Yeah. Did anybody on, did anybody on council get a chance to come in and see this, and walk through this with Rohit besides me?
I have not.
I have not either.
All right, I feel, I mean, Eric, you did an awesome job, thank you, and your whole team, this is amazing. But Rohit, can you do a couple of your, like, walkthroughs?
Sure, sure.
I know that we're all here in high density, high density, and everybody's kind of, I can feel it.
Um, Eric, can you take me to the, uh, summary slide for a minute? Yeah, that one. Um, so while Eric is saying that, you know, people, developers, big developers are looking for a target range, uh, fifteen percent, a little bit lower or higher, um, we still, I mean, we still do see that the commercial development is in the black. Um, there are opportunities to make that be, uh, higher percentage, um, and something that DFI didn't assess is that some of the landlords might be their own developers, um, and that might reduce the cost as well, uh, for land acquisition. Um, but we just, we don't want to assume that in this, uh, in this study. Um, of course, also they discussed other methods of reducing that cost, such as public-private partnerships, uh, reducing the cost for developers, which would increase that percent as well. Um, additionally, for the streetscape, um, one thing we do also have in addition to this, uh, MSD, uh, revenue, is that we did get that million dollar grant from our NPO, which, uh, which is to go towards the streetscape of this district. So whatever, whatever numbers you see here that will be generated, there is an additional one million dollars.
Can you go to those, those two screens that you showed me?
Coming in.
That we were flipping back and forth, it was the, we got the positive, we had the negative, and then we have the...
Yeah, well, actually, there's a summary slide here, that's this one, um, that I didn't have at that time. Um, so for example, if we were to choose, for example, the medium density scenario...
Oh, that's, that's okay.
Right, so the, let's say we were, for example, to choose the medium density scenario for discussion for both of them. Um, the west phase would have a positive one point three, and the east phase would have a negative of one point nine. Um, but then you factor in that one million, uh, dollar, uh, grant that we got, and we're in the positive in terms of the cost of developing, uh, the public infrastructure.
That's over a twenty-year application, correct?
Right, right. So we would have to take out some sort of loan or bond, um, probably a loan, because a, a bond would have to be applied to all the tax, uh, all the properties.
You could do a TIF.
Yeah, you could do a special mortgage.
Right, you can also do a TIF, but that's not even incorporated in this study. Uh, for, uh, just for reference, a TIF would be to assume that the property values of the existing residences in the margin area would be higher because of the existence of this district, and then to, um, assume how much that would be, and then take a loan on that amount of, uh, net tax increase. Uh, but that's not even accompanied in this, uh, this study.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
One note that I didn't see, that I, you know, again, I don't know if it's feasible or not based off of that MSD tax, but one other option is to obviously assess the MSD rate, and I'm not sure if that's something y'all really looked at, y'all just were driven by that point-two-five number that we had given you. But another part of, another analysis could be to potentially talk with and interview the property owners along this corridor, and see what their palate is for that tax. Is that something that we could additionally look at if council decides to go down this road some more?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely a, a survey that could be conducted. Um, you know, I'd be a little careful what you might get in turn that way.
So I, I'm curious about something. You mentioned the, uh, public-private partnerships with, uh, parking and, and open spaces. Um, do you have any, any estimate about what that would cost the village if we were to do, say, parking?
Uh, yeah, what we, what we did in our financial model was, obviously, you know, in the sort of dense scenarios, low up to high, we applied a typical surface parking cost, uh, per space to the model, um, and typically what we're seeing come in for, for surface parking lots, it's between four and five thousand dollars per space. Now, what we've seen in communities that, that have established public-private partnerships around parking infrastructure would be the town, uh, building, owning, managing parking, and leasing spaces back to a private developer at market rate, for essentially the, the developer then to have use of parking spaces, but the upfront cost of building and, and sort of developing the parking would come in sort of public development, um, uh, investment category. So, uh, you know, the four to five thousand dollar per parking space is, is, is those costs that we typically see for surface lots.
So is, would that, would that end up being...
Now, again, now, again, we, we had a wide variety of program, from a low density to a high density. So, in terms of pinning down what that exact cost is, depends on what that commercial program is, uh, and the mix of uses between office and commercial, um, and the tenant mix ultimately. So we just applied that one parking space for two hundred and fifty square feet of space at this point, without knowing much more beyond the program.
So, so what you're saying is, if we were to, well, I guess the question is, is if we were to do this, say provide parking, and then lease parking back to these developments, is there a potential for, um, a profit on that, or is that a break-even kind of thing, or is it a loss for us?
Yeah, I, I think there's, um, okay, so one, it needs to factor into the overall private development model for what it would take in order for the project to be financially feasible. So if you're looking at it from a lens of a private developer, getting to that fifteen to eighteen percent IRR for the project, what we typically see is parking lots aren't revenue generating, uh, infrastructure pieces for towns or cities. It's, it's challenging when you factor in the operating cost of parking, the ongoing maintenance, for it to have that sort of high revenue generating potential. Uh, and so, I think once you pay off those costs, and then, you know, you have it sort of, if it is invested in and managed over a long period of time, yes, it has that potential, but in this sort of twenty-year period, oftentimes we see more of a break-even infrastructure investment versus a major revenue generating potential. And that's just, you know, oftentimes communities will go in and generate a lot of money for parking, uh, but, you know, keeping sort of our experience in the parties that we've worked in, oftentimes has, has a little more challenges than, than that in form of a break-even potential.
Yeah, 'cause I, you know, basically, I don't want to see this being a, a tax burden on the entire village if we were to do something like this to help this district get moving, because it, it... Because it, it, and what it sounds like to me, what you're saying is, is that to make this feasible, we're going to have to compromise somewhere. And so that sounds like a, maybe something to consider then in that, in that light.
Yeah, I mean, we, we work on other village center projects and other town center projects where we evaluate a more refined sort of site concept, getting into the nitty-gritty details of programs and clear foot of specific retails and getting down to the, hammering down to the exact numbers of parking spaces. And oftentimes, those, those parking investments, if we put them into the, the public category and then leasing spaces back, that's that structure of the deal that would make that project financially attractive for a developer to come in. Now, obviously, each community is different. What are the market rates in Marvin compared to other communities that we work with? When that whole, you know, self-market analysis also helps inform what specific that deal structure is. But oftentimes, that parking infrastructure to catalyze the village center where there is no commercial, they're essentially trying to create it from scratch, there's going to need some support like that beyond just roads and from what our experiences to make the project attractive for a developer to come in and build that commercial.
So Eric, I'm, I'm just going to summarize here. It looks like we have a couple of different options for next steps. And I just wanted to kind of mention them. I know that you probably want us to, to make some decisions, and I don't think we're prepared to do that tonight. But the options I see at this point are to assess the, the real engineered pricing for the, the infrastructure needed. You know, get a detailed amount on that by maybe hiring out some engineers to look at that cost, so we can get an actual number there. And to really, for, for us to sit down and assess what we're willing to give publicly to decrease the total overall cost. Number two would be to assess the increase of density, which I'm, I'm not sure is an option for us. But it's obviously an option that needs to be thrown out there, or to decrease the open space. And then number three would be to assess those MSD rates based off of an increase over than the, the 25 cent that you're proposing. Is there any other options that I'm not, not seeing right now?
No, I mean, I think those were our general sort of big bucket recommendations. Based on the village center plan as presented to us. I think what typically DFI would do in our process like this when helping communities think through a village center concept is do a significant amount of market analysis. Determine what is that potential mix of programs that ultimately could be absorbed as part of the market? So we, you know, we drew, it was, this was more of a, you know, concept, you know, consensual plan-driven versus the, the market reality of what could the, the village center absorb over time? I think we all feel confident in the, the single-family residential having significant interest. But what about that commercial? How much commercial should be a part of that village center? Not necessarily a density approved, but what could the market handle in terms of a village center? I think that's one thing that would probably be, want to be evaluated. Getting down to a more refined with site analysis, can these programs work in these specific areas? I know Rohit has done a ton of analysis, a ton of evaluation, get to the overall offers and open space and considering sort of the, the sort of interest of the community stakeholders as well as elected officials. So there's been a lot of thought put into this. But to get to a refined public-private partnership, you would want to go in there and do a little bit more site analysis work of, one, what you mentioned, that, that infrastructure, those infrastructure investments. Maybe that $3.7 million of the east node is high. Maybe it doesn't need to be that much. If you focus on a core area first, that investment could be smaller to support the commercial development. And then really getting to a, a structure in a, a public-private partnership. That would get into more refined financial modeling of a specific program that's been endorsed by the, the council and, you know, elected officials and staff. So there's a lot of work to be done to, to get a developer on board. But I think you talked about those buckets in terms of making a project just generally, the village center concept were feasible, yes, evaluate the densities. If that's a no-go, evaluate those open space requirements or maybe strategies for the public to layer in participation to either open space or parking. Which DFI, we can do that work that's honored by the village.
So, you know, I, I don't know how much experience you guys have had with actually taking raw land and converting it to this kind of downtown center rather than revitalization. But it almost appears to me, and, and the, the public-private partnership is really going to be the direction if we're going to do anything here. And the reason I say that is, say we do nothing as a council. Say we say, you know what, we can't, we can't get there. It, it doesn't make sense financially. Then we have a situation where the individual landowners, and we're dealing with 12 or so individual landowners, may opt to, I guess, you know, de-annex and say, yeah, I'm going to go to the county. But they're still going to face the same issue, are they not, with trying to, if they, say they got rezoned in, with the county's blessing, and, and they were able to get to rezon the cost, and, and the, the financial aspect is still the same, is it not?
They're not doing the whole district. They're just doing their one parcel of property. They're not trying to do all the.
This is all about public and private partnerships.
Density would be different too if the county allowed it.
And you're going to have to get into the density piece of it. It's just the public-private partnerships and what can be done with it. And you, you got to start there. And if that's a non-starter, the density piece doesn't mean a hill of beans.
And we really need to assess the true cost of the, we don't know. I mean, they, they've given us a really good educated guess, but we really truly don't know until we actually get folks to.
Well, they, they made a good point, and I, I like, I like the way that they, you know, they did the east and the west. And one of the, one of the recommendations is just do, just do one, and then, you know, kind of work that from there to see what you have to do for the other one. That would be.
I think, clarifying that east versus west. I think that there's the idea that you wouldn't build it all at once. I think that's too much square footage to absorb all at once for a village center. So I think it's obviously thinking about it phased over time so that, one, the public investment pieces can come on board along with private development. To one, so that there's sort of a, a step-by-step process rather than a public investment for the entire village center come on board first and then kind of hope to realize the private development pieces over time. I think, we, I think DFI will recommend that sort of an unparalleled approach so that, one, the risk is taken off the, the public side. But also the risk is taken off the, the private side as well. Kind of do what's needed for each phase.
Yeah, but how do you pick? Like, you're not going to say, you're going to say, okay, you're ready. Like, you get to develop your property first.
Well, I think you have to look at the, you have to look at the numbers. I think they did a job presenting the numbers. And then it has to be commercial. You look at the commercial, look, I mean, the residential is, looks to me like residential's holding up, prompting up the commercial piece of it. So then you have to look, you know, then you have to look at that.
But that's what I'm saying. Like, who do you, who do you say, you say, okay, yep, you end it, or you go first?
Yeah, so it's a great, great exercise to get us to the point, as the first comment Joe made was, where's the good news?
Yeah.
Well, I think also if you're talking about who, who goes first, it's where can you unlock the development potential early on? I know you talked about 12 property owners, so we've evaluated. That's a, that's a challenge in itself of thinking about the corraling, coordinating 12 different property owners to realize one cohesive vision for a village center. So that's something that is, you know, something to be considered of is how do you go about managing all these different entities through a village center development rather than for thinking cohesively around all the land coming together for one, you know, massive development potential? So, you know, maybe it's, which companies could you unlock, for example?
So Eric, Eric, how do you do that? How do you get 12 landowners on board?
Kumbaya.
Yeah, I know, everybody's laughing. They think it's funny, but seriously.
It's, it's.
No, it's easy.
Yeah, that was Rory chiming in there. As I was saying, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a, it's, it's not easy. I mean, you know, I don't think there's going to have to be some significant agreements put in place, MOUs, memorant understandings. And, and I, I think a, a phased approach is necessitated there, given that challenge.
And I think what I've heard from previous conversations is that you all have done a lot of the communication with the property owners. I think there's been a lot of agreement sort of with the people in the overall village center district that they want to see this happen. And I think as Rory mentioned, there's that, you know, getting that written, those agreements in place, I think shows a lot of, you know, one, that there's a cohesive strategy for it overall, rather than having potentially one outlier who could derail the overall vision, and they decided to hold out.
Well, we're, we're fighting from, just from a, from a public standpoint is we're, we're fighting what Kim talked about, where the legal issues. And my, my only question is, because I'm, I'm held to, I'm in a similar situation in a piece of property down in Myrtle Beach. Everybody has, everybody has an opinion on what they want to do with my property, but except for me, or they never put themselves in my shoes. So I'm, I'm held hostage by everyone else going, not, I don't want to do that with your, with your property. Well, okay, then buy my property. And then you can sit there and do nothing with it. But, so it's a stalemate, and so we, what we have to do is we have to work probably close with you because we're, right now, we're not even, we're not able to get out of the gate. Great information. I mean, what you put together here is great information. We have to get out of the gate. And, and that would be to get it, you know, some kind of, some kind of advisement from you of how we do get through, how you've worked within the past, getting through the legal pieces of it. Because we don't want to turn into, you know, you're trying to do something positive, and you've got the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and they go, well, we'll sue. Well, if everything, if, you know, if every time we turn a corner, someone's going to go, oh, we're going to sue, well, then we're just, we're going to be sitting here 20 years from now going, man, I wish we would have done something with that, that land because they de-annexed. And now they're, he's got a bunch of horse, you know, he's got a horse manure factory.
We like to say a mattress factory with.
Yeah.
Hey Eric, I'll just, I'll just make a couple of notes here. I think that some of the legal issues that may be potentially looked at could be kind of forgiven once we get to the rezoning part, if council decides they want to go through with this. Because then at that point, we relieve the quid pro quo rezoning process, which could be the legal challenge. So I think that council first and foremost needs to make a decision if they want to fork up some more money for this project and/or waive some of the requirements that are set with our ordinance or our, our palatable density issues. So at this point, I feel like we have the options that we need to sit down and talk with council about. We have a retreat that's coming up, and they can make some decisions at that point. And then we can decide to, to move forward with additional contracts with you to look at property owner discussions and, and holding our hand through that process. But until we get to the part of rezoning is really the point where, where I think the legal questions will come up with.
Yeah, and, and the public-private partnerships, they happen a lot. You can get around the legal issues with that. And parking is one of the very common ones. I mean, parking decks are often municipal parking decks because they're so expensive to build. And that's your public input to get the development around it. We just have to structure it properly, make sure we're crossing everything, but it can be done.
Not, not that we're going to put in a parking deck in this district.
You don't have the density for a parking deck. It's just.
Just throwing it out there so everybody's listening.
I think that's a good idea. Mr. Mayor, we can put this on the retreat agenda.
I think that makes sense, just to kind of keep the ball rolling here. We'll move this to an agenda item for the upcoming retreat in a couple of weeks. But truly do appreciate it's, quite frankly, eye-opening on the, the information. I think for anyone listening in too on the Zoom call is, you know, it's, we got some uphill challenges to consider and face and figure out, you know, is there a way to, to skin this cat?
Yeah. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. Rohit will have all the information he can share with you all for your retreat. And then, yes, if you feel like it's something that you, she needs, you would like DFI to talk about what we could do to help you think through, one, either acquisition strategies or the phasing strategies or overall structuring of public-private partnerships to get the village center rolling. That's what we do. We can help rethink through that. So I appreciate, you know, your, your students involved at this point in helping you, helping us through your great opportunity with the center.
Thank, thank you. And I, I just point out to council, if you get a chance to get with Rohit on this.
Yes.
Thank you for getting it. It probably makes sense for a better understanding going into the meeting on, on the retreat.
I was impressed that it was very helpful.
Yeah, so, but again, thank you all. Very good information.
Thank you, guys.
And appreciate all of that. All right. So we're basically tabling that to the thing. But again, for all council members, let's get with Rohit separately if we could, save some time there in a meeting, if you will. Next up, we have a discussion and consideration of 2015 Metropolitan Transportation Plan recommendations for candidate projects.
Off Rohit. You would please give me one second to open up PowerPoint. Okay, but I'll, I'll introduce the, the topic here while I'm pulling up the PowerPoint, which is that our regional, the CRTPO, which is our Regional Transportation Planning Organization, has a, a five-year update to their Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is the, the plan for all major roadway projects that they hope to accomplish by the year 2050. I really cannot.
You really can't.
Let me open it up.
Yeah, just go ahead and open up the top.
I have it opened up at my computer, but hopefully this is the current version. Okay, so it only does include larger transportation projects. Obviously, they do have another plan called the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is include all transportation projects, but that's not what we're talking about right now. So what they're asking for is as they update to their 2050 MTP, they want each local government's opinion on what projects should be included. They don't need our input on the two projects that are already committed to happen, which are the roundabout here at Marvin Road and the NC-16 widening. So we won't be talking about that, but I just want to let you know that since it's happening at some point, they don't need our input for those to be in the MTP. But projects that aren't committed that are in the 2045 MTP are Newtown Road between Crane Road and Providence Road. It is in their plan to widen it to three lanes and add bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. And also Waxaharvin Road south of Bonds Grove Church to Helms Road to also make that three lanes and add bicycle and pedestrian. So these are in their 2045 plan, and they would be asking us our opinion if we want to migrate those to the 2050 plan as they're proposed. And then there are all of these thoroughfares that are not on a 2045 MTP but can be added to the 2050 MTP if desired. So that's the ask right now. We have this list of eligible roads for like major widening projects. So this is not including, you know, we do have a bicycle and pedestrian network plan. If we were to take the two-lane concept and just add a path on one side, that's not really MTP level of project that they're looking for. They're looking for, you know, you want to widen it and add bicycle and pedestrian on, ooh. Sorry, I haven't been sharing this whole time. Okay.
So Rohit, these are already there, so you're not asking these unless they want to change it?
No, uh, yeah, those are there.
Um, yes, no, those, I am asking the top two, which are in the 2045 MTP, can be removed from consideration in the.
It's to keep them.
Right, to the 2050 MTP. It's only, it's only these two projects that Marvin Road and Newtown Road and NC-16 that are, are in the 2050 MTP for sure because they're already committed, they're already happening. These two projects, which were in the 2045 MTP, are not committed yet, so they could be removed if desired by the municipality. And then, or they could be carried over into the 2050 and any other eligible road widening project.
I mean, they do know that Newtown Road between Crane Road and Providence Road is not in Marvin, right?
Yes, but since it's adjacent to Marvin, they're, you know, they would ask us our turn now.
That's because we have a park right there too.
Right.
Oh, that's right, in the middle of.
Yeah, so it's kind of a.
Union County.
Satellite area.
Can you go back to those, Ross?
It's a satellite park.
Yeah, so you can either confirm or remove the first two and/or add any of the last seven onto your considerations for major road widening.
I mean, they say ask for the sky, right? You're going to, probably not get, you know, I mean, it's just, I, I see some, the things that stick out to me were the, and I don't know if it's on there, but Bonds Grove and, and Providence where they come together and that. And that was an issue between Waxahar wanting us to participate in doing something there. Uh, that alignment on the corner of Waxahar Marvin Road and Bonds Grove, um, that is a big area of concern. I'm just talking, thinking Marvin and the third place would be Joe Carr and, and.
But the intersections are totally separate.
Right, intersections are different. Like if we.
They're not asking about the intersections. They're literally asking about widening these roads here.
Right, if you take any of these segments and ask, we want this whole stretch of road to be widened from two lanes to three lanes for some reason, uh, like to have a turn lane. Uh, that's kind of the scale of what they're asking for.
But all those intersections.
Yeah, look at Joe Carr there on there. I'd say, why would we want to widen that? They're already flying through there.
I don't think we would want to.
So we could, I would say, didn't want to remove that.
I don't see why there's a need for a turn lane on any of these roads. If anything, maybe bicycle lanes, but why would we need a turn lane on any road in Marvin?
Right, these two have already been decided at some point in time by a board.
A board and they could be removed.
We're not, I don't think anyone's here to say they want those removed.
Yeah, so if y'all don't want those removed, then we can just agree that we want to keep those.
Right.
And then do you want to add anything else? I don't, I don't see any reason to widen any roads in Marvin because all that's doing is inviting people to pass like they do over here on this three lane in front of, of the school illegally. I've seen it many, many times, people racing over there and other things.
By Sandy Ridge?
No.
Yes, by Sandy Ridge.
Oh, by Sandy Ridge.
Have you heard any of that?
So Rohit, who projects can you use? We've got two that would.
So that's what I'm saying.
He's smiling.
Yeah, and that's the thing is like, that's what we would be in, why not by putting a turn lane in the middle of these mainly residential roads? I don't see a need for a turn lane. I could see possibly bicycle lanes to accommodate the hundreds of bicyclists.
Can we tell, can we say that, the bicycle and the sidewalks?
Bicycle and sidewalks only, but not three lanes?
They won't ride on them. Yeah, if you're looking for me to put a bicycle lane in, you're, you're nuts because they won't ride on them. We've got bicycles on two lane roads, you've got a 521 that's got four lanes. I don't mind if they take up one lane of the four lane. But when you're taking up a whole lane, today I rode behind a bicycle for four miles. Just ride behind a bicycle because the person in front of me wasn't going around, it couldn't go around.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if there's a bicycle lane, they can stay to the right of the bicycle lane and you have.
They won't.
They won't?
No.
Putting in, and just as I'm looking down the list, so putting in a turn lane at Joe Carr, I think is, is extremely dangerous. And, and the reason why I say that people pulling out of Joe Carr onto Marvin Road, making a left, would not be able to see.
It's not the intersection, it's all of Joe Carr. The, the intersections are going to have something done. They've already asked us.
But even just pulling out of there, it's just, it's, it's a.
No, I agree with you, but they, but we're not talking about like, we told whoever asked that we want roundabout there and we want a roundabout at Bonds Grove. This is literally all of Joe Carr is going to have a turn lane plus a sidewalk plus a bicycle path. That's what they're, that's what they're asking us if we want to do.
And I really don't see the, the general public swallowing having their yards taken up by, by this either.
So what would, would we, after beating this to death, would we say that the top two that's already, that's already there, we don't want to take those off?
I, I don't. Andy sounds like he does, but I don't.
I do, I want them removed. I don't want turn lanes because it's just asking for trouble.
Bob?
I'm with Andy on the first two. Taking them off. I'm not interested in widening any of those roads.
Well, if, if we don't widen them, then we become like, maybe.
And you have to remember.
Our goal is a place to avoid coming into because it all condenses them into.
But you also have to remember this is going to be in 30 years. So what is going to have happened around us?
We're, we're trying to keep Marvin, Marvin. We're not trying to make it thoroughfare.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying that in 30 years, what we see now is not going to be, just not.
But are we?
No, 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 I'm with, I, 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 you got me. You got my opinion.
Remember, when you want nothing, you eventually get something, something you don't want.
It's up to you. Jamie and I want to leave the top two.
But, I mean, but I, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah, I mean, we're opening the roads to, to, you know, people doing things that they shouldn't be doing, which creates danger on the roads. We don't have, we have residential driveways along these thoroughfares. We don't have, you know, major subdivisions and apartment complexes and these things that would require a turn lane. So I don't understand what the, the need or even want for a turn lane on any of these roads would be. If there was anything, sidewalks possibly, but we're already working on greenways to, to accommodate the pedestrian traffic, which is safer and nicer. So sidewalks really aren't a need and bicycles, you know, if they're not going to use them, why have them? It's a waste of money. Um, they can ride on these, uh, on the greenways if they so desire or still manage to hold up traffic like they do.
So are you, are you looking for direction tonight?
Yeah. Yes, because this is.
This is the second time we've seen this.
Yeah, and it's due this Friday. I have to tell them.
Tell them Friday.
Yeah.
Do y'all want to take a vote on these two since they're already existing now? It sounds like two of you, you're divided. So if you want to.
I think we need to do it better because I can't really.
Okay, vote on these two?
Yeah, take that vote on these two. You want to take them individually or?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll take a stab at it because I want to keep them. So I'll, I'd like to make a motion to keep in the 2045 MTP project list Newtown Road between Crane Road and Providence Road.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to vote.
Nay.
Bob, you have to vote.
You have to vote for me.
Um, God, I love these times.
You're actually going to do?
Yeah, given, given what I know now, I mean, I want, I, I really don't want to invite more people into this area. I mean, that was, I think. Bjorn had mentioned though, there was never any plans to widen the road down there and that was always my biggest fear. So I would vote to a, a nay on that at this point.
Uh, thanks. I mean, either way is fine. We just have to come to a vision, like what is the vision for Marvin? Um, and if it's not to.
I'm just concerned about how, how that, many of that affects and we're already getting high density and stuff. And it's like, you know. I, you know, I want a reason to put high density in and says, oh, you, you got roads now that can support it and stuff. And, and again, I can't, I don't see the few, I can't see in the 30 years what this is even going to look like. I would hope that is a distinct difference that you know you're in the Marvin area just by driving and the feel and what you get and stuff. And widening lanes doesn't, I think, promote that.
I don't, this, I don't disagree with, with, with Andy and Bob's concept on this. But in 30 years, you're going to have 30 more years of bicyclists up and down these roads. And look at this, look at the length of those roads right there. You can't get, I'm telling you right now, you cannot get down, if you take a right right here on Waxahar Marvin Road going that way, if you get behind a bicyclist traffic time, guess what? You're going to drive 10 miles an hour beside, behind Joe Blow, who's just decided to do, take up bicycling and is out of breath by the time he's 200 yards down the thing. And you're going to stay behind him like I did today till you get down to some place where there's an opening.
The only thing I could say is how you combat that is in 30 years, you're hoping there are bike lanes. Now, your point is, will they use them?
But that's, that's the bike lanes right there.
But, but that's a, a package and it comes with three lanes and, and bicycle lanes and sidewalks, which we, we're already addressing the sidewalks.
They're not going to ride bicycles on sidewalks.
But.
Right.
But they don't ride, they don't ride bicycles in our neighborhood.
But, but you could, you could, you could create an ordinance that requires them off of the road, could you not?
They're not on roads.
Down the road, but if we had a bike path.
How it's, how it's enforced whether you can ride on a bicycle or not, that's the law.
I mean, it's to you, to your point, I mean, that, that's how I would look at that. It's like if I was able to incorporate the bike path or the greenways where the bike bicyclist in these critical areas had a bike path in 30 years to ride on, we could, we could create an ordinance that says, you know what bicyclist? You're, you're creating more of a hazard for, you know, people being aggressive.
They don't care.
I drove with my daughter who's just learning how to drive and she refused to pass that bicyclist. She didn't think she had enough time to get out. It was fine, but you just had to be patient, but.
Well, the other thing that we got to remember is 30 years from now, this may not be a fad anymore. It has been a fad over the last 10, but prior to that, it wasn't. So what's going to happen in a fad? All the bicyclists.
Oh.
I mean, 30 years from now, this may not even be an issue anymore.
Procedurally, there's, there's been a motion second, it's been determined.
Yeah, so let's move on.
It's, yeah.
So unless y'all want to, another motion, we can move on to this next one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The motion failed three to two.
Okay. So I'm going to make the motion to approve the 2045 MTP project, the Waxahar Marvin Road between Bonds Grove Church Road and Helms Road.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay. And trying to be consistent with where I was on the first one, I'm going to vote nay on this at this point.
Again, failed three to two.
I mean.
And then, does anyone make, does anyone want to make a motion on any of these other projects?
No, I don't want any of those.
I don't either.
When, is that all you need then?
That's, that's right. Is there a consensus on that and Bob as well?
Bob, did you want to add any of those other roads in?
Oh, absolutely not. No, absolutely not.
I got everything I needed then. Thank you so much for the discussion and, uh, participation today.
All right, thank you. Uh, moving on, we've got reports and updates. Manager report?
Um, so most of my topics are actually in the agenda, just a couple of things. Uh, we're working on the RFPs for the solid waste, which is a lot of work with Weddington. Uh, we're also working on the Billithall RFP and construction bids and, and still proceeding with that. Uh, the no left turn sign was installed today, uh, at the roundabout and.
Did the officers know that?
They do know.
If I may make a comment on that, I did come through just prior to the meeting and they're not enforcing it. I did see the sign and they're not enforcing it at this point.
I saw two people turn left with the cops sitting there.
We'll let them know. He literally just got put up the desk, so they probably have.
They may not know, I don't know, but you could see it from when you pull up on Marvin Road.
Oh, good.
It's right there. So it's, I mean, it's right where you want to turn if you're going to turn left.
Okay.
Is it on what side? On the right side?
Bob, let's take this on the right side that you can see it.
Yeah, it's very well placed.
It is very well placed.
Cause we're talking about, so are you going to call the sheriff's office and tell them that?
I'll send, I'll send the off duty an email.
Okay, can you do me a favor and tell them to move their cars back some? Cause when they're not actually out there directing, they put their car right on the street and you, you cannot see what's coming from South Carolina, sorry.
Okay. Uh, second thing I wanted to mention, disc golf package. So as you saw at one of the last meetings, Derek presented some options to you all for sponsorship. He's still working on the policy, but I have advised him that he could still go out right now and create some, some talk and some discussion about getting some sponsors for that. We will have to pull that money in through our general, um, operations and then back out once we get it. So it will be a budget amendment if he does get money in for that. We will budget for that in next year's, um, budget and I'll continue to go over that with you in the retreat. Uh, but in the case that he gets money now, we'll have to do a budget amendment to take that money in and let him spend it. So just let you know, you'll come back to that later. Um, second thing, part changes. So there's been some changes in the park situation over the last couple of months based off of Derek losing his full-time person, um, due to reasons, medical reasons. Um, and so basically Derek has absorbed all of his duties. And so we are looking at converting him to a 40-hour-a-week, uh, full-time employee and then bringing some of his part-time people in for shorter hours. We will do this all within the budgeted salary line items, but just wanted to let you know that they are, they are the changes that we will, will to make and, uh, we'll put in the budget for next year as well.
Is that revenue neutral or where is it?
It will be, well, it'll, it'll be within what's budgeted.
But didn't Derek come to us and say, well, reduction of hours?
He did years ago, but he is.
Is he okay with 40 now?
He's had to absorb them just based off of the changes that have happened over the last couple of months. He's been fine, so. And he's also been picking up a lot more administrative tasks and other tasks with his job title change as well. So.
Bob, he's okay with that.
We will do those changes in this fiscal year that we're discussing now within the budgeted salary line items that we have currently. So just letting y'all know that we will be making those changes.
And when do we get to truck?
Oh, yeah, I was thinking about that the other day.
It's being built or looked to see if we can get one that's already built, but if it's not.
So it's a 2021 then, it's not a.
They're putting the lights underneath it.
And lower it.
Tricking it out.
And that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Get out of that zone. Uh, next up, planner's report. Rohit?
I have no reports for today unless anyone has any questions.
Seriously, you guys get in and see Rohit and talk to him about this stuff. It was very helpful.
Yeah, yeah. Um, thank you Rohit. And next up, Roger's report?
Um, I don't, I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Are we going to be, you know, my dinner on Tuesday night?
We're booking it.
Oh, we're, yeah, we're talking about that later. Okay. Um, thank you Christine. Next up, we have deputies' report.
That report was, uh, given to you via email. Uh, you have any questions?
We have any questions for?
We all have a physical copy.
I am seeing you guys a lot more. I just want to point out, I, I don't know if residents recognize that, but having another full-time officer. Um, you know, I got stopped actually holding one of our signs, just kind of measuring it. So someone thought, the officer thought I was stealing the sign. I was not. I was just on our street trying to figure out how these signs are going to work. But, uh, yeah, he happened, officer happened to be driving by going, you're stealing signs? So, um, full disclosure, I was just there to measure, but it is good to see you guys out and appreciate that. Um, and I hope the community understands and appreciates that their tax dollars at work there. So thank you again for your service. Any other questions? All right, moving on, planning board chair report. I see Chairman John Jones up on the screen there.
I really don't have anything else to add. Y'all had the, the benefit of sitting through our previous planning board at our, um, during our joint meeting of the last week. That was what our meeting was like, you know, previous to that. So, um, it was long and, uh, full of discussion, but, uh, I think we're, we're making some progress there.
Yeah, I think everybody got to move forward one step. So, uh, thank you for that and thanks for, uh, putting that together. Anything else, John?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you. And then next up, we have PR and G chair report. Uh, I don't see John on there. So, um, is anyone?
Nope.
Kim, you don't have any comments? Okay. So we are, don't.
Somebody just pulled the emergency.
It's eight o'clock. Okay, so moving on to the public consent agenda, there's nothing to, um, uh, approve. So we're moving on to public hearing. The first one is open. Public hearing for conditional use permit application number 20-12548, pool in the side yard at 1901 Grig Lane. Um, need a motion to open up the public hearing?
I'm moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you have anybody looking to speak on that?
Rohit, why don't you speak during the public hearing? I think that's a string away to do it because you're still presenting evidence.
Hmm, so you want me to present or to speak, to say something? Okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is, yeah. Maybe we need to be close to public hearing and then you do it, but the public hearing is really when you do these.
Discussion and consideration and public comment. So there's no public comment, I don't believe.
Well, I mean, it's the, we're, we're in the public hearing now, so he's going to present.
Okay.
So do we do public comment portion now or after he presents?
I will, I usually let staff present first and then let people comment, include the applicant if they need to. Staff often gets.
Do I swear him now or swear him later?
Yes, we'd swear him.
So if somebody wants to make a comment, do we have to swear then then?
Yeah, virtually.
We would, we got, we're zooming.
All right, raise your hand.
Yeah.
He did.
He did.
It's a long day. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I swear.
All right. So have at it and bring us up to speed on this first one.
So 1901 Grig Lane is on a corner. Um, the challenge of this pool is that, uh, the house is rotated in a way that, uh, on the ground, the applicant would be, you know, the feeling is you're building the pool in the back of your house, but the, uh, on paper, it's their side yard. It's between 1901 and 1905 Grig Lane. So it is technically a pool. So it is technically a pool that is going in the side yard. And, uh, in our ordinance, all pools that are in a side yard less than a hundred and fifty feet, uh, set back from the side have to have a conditional use permit. So, yes. Um, okay.
So the house faces the apex of the corner?
Yeah.
Am I on the right map here?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So it is the backyard, but it's not the backyard?
Right.
Yeah.
It's going what would characteristically be behind the house, but on paper, it's just side yard. Like, if you had two houses on the same street, it's, it's going in between the...
Because, because the mailbox is on the side yard instead of the front yard.
Right, right. Um, the neighbor, the side yard neighbor did, uh, provide a written testimony in support of the pool. Um, in fact, uh, it's, it's very strong support that is also in the package.
Is it?
Uh, you were just looking at it.
Dan Harper.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, I mean... Tough situation. Where do you locate if you, if you do want a pool?
In the bigger backyard.
In the backyard. Technically, that's their backyard.
Technically, I mean, uh, there, it's just...
But it, it looks like the screening's pretty good too from what they have proposed.
And if the neighbor's okay with it, all that screening is gonna continue to grow.
And those bushes are how high typically?
Three or four foot.
Yeah. Okay. Seven, three, six feet.
So, any qu- questions or any more presentation on that?
Yeah.
Rohit, do you have anything else to prove, provide for us?
I have nothing else. Um, if, uh...
This went through planning board and they approved?
They approved it, they just wanted to confirm that the landscaping was, uh, opaque enough and it was.
So no conditions need to be met to, uh...
No additional conditions.
Okay. So from here, we go for public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna ask now if there's anyone here in the audience or in our Zoom audience that wants to provide any public comment at this time.
So Matt Ferris, I'm the homeowner. I'm here so I can be able to explain any questions you all have. Rohit represented, I have nothing further to ask other than I'm present.
Okay, alright, he's just letting us know he's present. I was gonna say we'd have to swear you in via Zoom, but, uh, appreciate, uh, that, um, that comment. So he's here to answer any questions. So again, from the public, any comment or questions or concerns? Alright.
One, two, three, four.
We don't see anything, so moving forward, we need a finding of facts.
Well, let's close the public hearing.
Sorry. I'll need to, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, so I need someone to, um, make a motion.
Can I do all of them?
I think you can on this one, cause they aren't that specific.
And we're not putting any...
There's no...
They're not putting any, um, conditions or justification for it, so I think you can be more efficient.
I hate doing these. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Number two oh...
Number two oh dash one two five four eight for a pool in the side yard at nineteen oh one Grig Lane. And I will find in the affirmative, the following findings of fact?
Yes.
Okay. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter in the Village Land Use Plan. I don't need to do five?
Nope.
Okay.
Alright, that said, uh, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, come on.
Get that pulled in and enjoy it. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have, uh, public hearing number two. Open the public hearing for conditional use permit number two oh dash one two five five four, pool in the rear yard that abuts side yard at two oh two eight Groves Edge Lane. I'll need a motion to open, uh, this public hearing.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright. Um... Austin, you need to swear him in again?
Do I need to swear him in again?
Yeah, cause it's a big public hearing.
Formalities, bear with us.
Alright, do you solemnly swear, uh, that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God? Hopefully.
Help us out.
So this is twenty twenty eight Groves Edge Lane. It's another, uh, because it's on the corner, the rear of the house faces the side yard of the house on Red Twig Court. Um, the interesting thing about this one is that there was a pool built on the, the house that's on the other side of the cul-de-sac, in the same position, same conditional use permit, same kind of pool. Um, even the same, uh, pool contractor, um, it's just, it was the same thing. It had, it needed a conditional use permit, it was approved at that time. Let me see if I can pull up the map. So that gives very strong, uh, support for this conditional use permit, um, because it's the exact same scenario. But also, this conditional use permit has the support of, of a written testimony from the, the side yard, the, the neighbor whose side yard abuts this pool.
Yep.
Um, let me see, once again, going back to, um, so going back to this image here, um, the applicant is over here at twenty twenty eight Groves Edge Lane. And you'll see that across the cul-de-sac, uh, that home was in the same, uh, scenario where, um, that's not, I don't think that's the correct address, but, um, that pool needed a conditional use permit because it was facing the side yard of, um, this home over here. And it was approved at that time. So other than that, um, there's, you know, significantly more than the minimum of, uh, distance, opacity, and everything else that's required. Um, and I would recommend to approve this conditional use permit.
Any questions from council, comments?
No.
I will say I ride by this with, on my bike ride and I saw that lot in that public hearing and it's a lot of, you know, area there and as long as they screen it properly, which it looks like we've addressed. No issues from the planning board?
No issues.
Okay, so, um, before we close this public hearing, I'd like to ask if there's any questions, concerns, or comments from the public at this time? Okay, seeing nobody, I will, uh, call for a motion to close. Close the public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Bob, we heard you. Um, the motion passes unanimously and who wants to take this one on? To...
Don't everybody jump at it.
Tim, you do so good at it. You're so good at it.
You're so articulate.
The finding of facts.
And all that.
Okay. Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the conditional use permit number two zero dash one two five five four, pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard at twenty twenty eight Groves Edge Lane. And I would like to find in the affirmative, the following findings of fact. Alright. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter in the Village Land Use Plan.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alright, moving on to the final public hearing, I believe. And we have, um, open the public hearing for conditional use permit application number two oh dash one two five seven one, pool in the rear yard that abuts side yard at one 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 seven Firethorn Club Drive. Um, I need a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We need, uh, Rohit to be sworn in again quickly.
Alright, yep. So I'll go through before. Uh, do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I swear.
There you go.
Alright, Rohit.
Okay. Um, wait one more second, let me turn this around. Okay. So this is a pool that also is in a rear yard that abuts a side yard. Uh, the address is on Firethorn Club Drive and it abuts, uh, side yard of one on Spyglass Lane. Um, this one, I don't think I did get a, uh, testimony from the neighbor, but, um, that's just extra support in this case. Um, it's the same, uh, situation as many others before. The, uh, the perpendicular distance from the, the rear yard property line is around fifty feet. Of course, the minimum is twenty, so it's far more than the minimum. And the screening, uh, proposed, um, is greater than, um, what we normally see in regular pool applications. Um, the, the, the density of trees here will be greater than ninety percent opacity. And, um, in addition, they're proposing a wall with the screening for the street side so that the area of the pool that extends beyond the side of the house would not be seen from the street at all. Um, in which case, um, I have no other, uh, comments except to recommend, uh, the approval of this pool.
And how high is that wall?
They're saying it's gonna be eight feet here.
Okay.
And this is approved by the HOA?
Um, see, that might be a question for the applicant who would be, uh...
I see Danielle is on the...
Yeah. On the call.
Hey. Hey, we're the homeowners here, so I don't know if we need to be sworn in. That's not eight foot, by the way. Uh, it is being, uh, approved by HOA.
Yeah, I think they're struggling.
Yeah, well, hold on one sec. Dennis, I mean, uh, okay, one sec, we need to swear you in, I guess, on the, uh...
Oh.
From, it's considered testimony. Okay.
Okay, who am I swearing in?
Danielle.
Danielle.
Okay. Danielle, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Thank you, Danielle. So, uh, if you wanna...
The eight foot screening wall, if that's tree. That's just, the eight foot screening is trees. The brick wall is just like two to three feet coming off of our air conditioning unit, basically.
Okay, so that'll block the air conditioning unit that's right there. You won't see that from the road.
Correct. Yep. And, yeah, that's already been approved by HOA as well.
Okay, so that, that was a question to do.
I just spoke, the letter I have here is that the, the hollies are eight feet, so the total screening is eight feet tall, but not the wall.
Okay.
Correct.
And again, it, there's an issue, isn't there a creek behind your, your yard there too? But that doesn't even come into play. Okay. Very good.
Yep.
Any other comments, Rohit?
I have none.
Okay.
Planning board voted to approve it.
Okay, and then do we have any, um, comments, public comments from anyone else? Are we still in public?
Yes.
Still in public hearing?
I just wanted, I just wanted to, do, do your neighbors care? Are they good with it?
They're all good with it. I think, yeah, yup, everybody's good.
Yeah, across the street is Firethorn, actually, the club, pretty much, you know, which is, that I know the property. And then you have one neighbor that's to the, to the left of you if you're going down the...
Well, I can't picture where this is.
It's right on the corner of Spyglass. They're on the corner of Spyglass. So you make the left of the, should be the second left you could make that goes up the hill to the pool?
Yeah, I know where Spyglass is.
As soon as you make that left, it's that house right on the corner of Firethorn and Dan.
It was, it was, um, Tony Garcia's old house.
That's not gonna help. So if you're driving in and you're going to the pool, swimming pool.
Yeah, no, I know, I know the street, but is it on the right or the left?
It's on the left.
It's on the screen.
It's on the left, yeah. Right there. Come down Firethorn.
I got it. Okay, I'm good. Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then you're, you're across from the tennis court, so it's, you know, shouldn't be an issue. Okay, any other comments from anyone in the public?
Sorry.
Or, um, concerns?
Speak now on this stuff, prefer to hold your peace.
Alright, seeing none, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. And, alright, who's gonna take this one on?
Alright, I'll do it just because nobody else is talking. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the conditional use permit number two zero dash one two five seven one, pool in rear yard that abuts side yard at one 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 seven Firethorn Club Drive. And I will find in the affirmative, the following findings of fact. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter in the Village Land Use Plan.
Alright. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congrats, Danielle, and I'll, I'll look for the invite when you have the grand opening.
Absolutely. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Bye.
Alright. Alright, next up on the agenda, moving forward, um, is, uh, village hall?
I don't have anything to report right now.
Nothing at this time, okay. Moving forward, G, item G, unfinished business, consider approval NCDOT agreement revisions for Marvin Lee Town Road Roundabout.
So at the last, uh, work session, y'all had a presentation from Sean Efferson with DOT in reference to the need to revise the DOT contract for the proposed roundabout at Newtown and Marvin Road. Um, in that presentation, he had discussed the overage of the right-of-way cost. And inside your agenda packets is the material that y'all requested from him in terms of the, the parcels that were impacted. It looks like it's right at point nine two acres. So it's right at an acre of what's needed for easement purposes. And the proposed agreement is in the agenda packets as well. My memo, the last table in my memo pretty much summarizes the changes that are, are being proposed, which is a hundred thousand dollar increase from what we're currently obligated right now. The agreements are basically the same thing besides the hundred dollars, um...
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, yes, in addition for the right-of-way.
Christina, does it have anything about start date in the contract? I didn't see anything.
No, it does not.
Okay.
They won't, they won't do that because it'll be contingent upon right-of-way acquisition.
Well, I just wanted it to be somewhere in there that they don't have to wait until the summer if they're ready to go. Like, we would prefer them to just get it done. I don't know if that's something that we can...
We can communicate that.
That was one of the things that I think Sean mentioned was about schools, but, and we did indicate at the time that we didn't feel like it was gonna be hardly an impact on the busing.
I mean, they, they, they can figure that out for about the six weeks that has to be done. I think people would much rather have the roundabout done and a little more, have to get their kids out to the bus stop a little earlier.
Yeah.
Then, uh, so if we can just, that, that was my only thing with this. Um, I mean, it kinda is what it is at this point. Um, I just wanna make sure that they know that as soon as they are ready, like, they have it and they can pull the trigger, then they need to go and don't wait till the summer.
Great. And there's only one, one area really that is gonna be affected bus-wise that will have to go through South Carolina and come back around. And there's only one, one area really that is gonna be affected bus-wise that will have to go through South Carolina and come back around.
Yeah, that one section down there. And I don't know how many school kids are down there.
I don't know either.
To be honest.
There's not a lot, 'cause there's not high density in that area at all. But I do know of a few people that live in that area, including one that I think that's on our planning board too, so. But that's an issue, that's the only thing from a bus standpoint that I don't think is a big issue.
So, yeah.
Any other questions? A hundred thousand is better than what the initial, we're talking about. We're originally talking 300,000, so...
Now, I will say that I am assuming that he is, because he discussed having additional 300,000 in CMAC funding, and I'm assuming that he's making the assumption that he is getting that money. So if he doesn't, he may come back and ask for more, but at this time, he's anticipating, I would assume, getting that money.
So don't let you have a contract, like, it's kinda binding.
It is, but it's all contingent upon there.
Until DOT takes it.
It is, but it also states that we have a 50-50 split for accounting for funding that doesn't come from the feds. It's a split.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter if it comes over and we're just on the hook. The contract doesn't make any difference.
Well, yeah, it says you and DOT split the...
So why do they need a new contract if that's the case?
Because they had money earmarked in right-of-way that they needed more. They had $15,000 and they can't restart the project until they have more funding in right-of-way, 'cause they don't have enough for that specific phase of the project. We were initially gonna pay $15,000 for right-of-way acquisition. They're asking us for another 75-ish...
Thousand or hundred?
Thousand.
But that's what I'm saying, so it's, that's not 50%, so, okay, whatever.
Just to point out for the record, for those of you listening in and not aware of this, but the council was, 'cause we were copied on it, our town manager sent a letter to the county commissioners, appealing to, you know, kinda help pony up. And our argument for that was that, I think, the village has only so many cars, maybe 1,800 vehicles in the village itself, yet in this little area, 15,000 cars go through. So that's mostly union county members taking advantage of that. And in the past, if you look over the last few years, the $80,000 we assign to officers a year, it's now over $400,000. And we have spent out of our own tax dollars to basically create convenience for the majority of other union counties. So if you get a chance, and the letter's out there, it's a public document, but it was a very nice, well-written letter to our commissioners, appealing to them to kindly ask for a thing. So, great job on that and great points, I think, that need to be made. That we're really, and that's, we're talking to the donut holes of, they paid zero dollars on that, but they are county residents, so thank you.
Yeah, so for the public listening at home, we did request funding from the county to assist with either the roundabout construction, right-of-way acquisition, and/or some in-kind services, because we are currently budgeting close to $80,000 for the off-duty patrols. So we did ask them to make that part of their annual budget request that they will consider in their next fiscal year. So we will see if that happens.
At least helping us out from the sheriff.
Is that a response to our email?
No.
We sent it, though, it's officially out there. And our appeal to the sheriffs, too, that department using the funding for that would make sense, too, so. But great letter, by the way. Thank you for that. All right.
Do you need us to approve this?
I do, yes.
Before they charge them a fine. Does anybody else have any questions? For Christina?
Hold on, I don't swing down.
I'm sorry. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the NC DOT agreement revisions for Marvin Road and Newtown Road Roundabout.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we discuss a consider approval or denial or revisions to personnel policy.
I have some questions.
So I'm gonna go over these again, if y'all don't mind.
One by one?
Just, just so I can highlight the main parts, just so I can make sure y'all fully understand it before we do it. I'll be quick, I'm sorry.
Hold it, Christine will.
So we did discuss this at the last work session. Again, overall, most of the changes that you see here are associated with the form of government change and basically converting everything that was the council's authority then to the manager. I'm not gonna go over all of those, but I will just go over some of the highlights of what's in here. So if anyone doesn't like any portion of this, then we can go ahead and speak about it at that point in time and make those changes before y'all consider approval. In your agenda packets, all the track changes are there. Employment, equal employment opportunity, just some general legal language was added in there, as well as employment at will. Also wanna have the attorney here, 'cause he was not present during the initial conversation. So if you have anything that you wanna say at that point in time, if you wanna just interject, Chaplin. Most of the things, Chaplin has reviewed this, him and I worked on this for several weeks. So he is good with all of this, but if y'all have any questions, he's here to answer those questions as well. Employment at wills, stuff that we added, religious accommodations, HIPAA, genetic information, Americans with disabilities, immigration law. All of that was legal information that we didn't currently have in our existing policy that we added. We also added bullying to the anti-harassment policy with some language therein. Moving on to page nine. We did change the probationary period from 12 to six months. Changed some language in there about performance evaluations just being done annually. Hiring and promotion, we did make that change to where council will no longer does the hiring and firing, it is done by the manager. Moving on to page 10.
And just to be clear, if I could interrupt real quick. So I see some highlighted in blue, some highlighted red, some is stricken in red, some is stricken in blue. Anything that's highlighted is new, whether it's red or blue.
That's right. That's between me or Chaplin. One of us is one color, one is the other.
We like the different colors.
You're a color guy, so, all right, so, all right.
Okay, same thing with all the next changes, it's all applicable to manager. Did take some language in there about dress code, was we're just gonna make sure that our employees are professionally dressed. Employment status, we added some language in there about FLSA. We also changed the temporary employee to be a six-month person instead of 12 months. I do believe that's state law, I think Chaplin looked at that. Chaplin's red, I do remember now.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure we stayed under the monetary caps or the hour caps that could trigger it into a higher category.
We also changed... No, we didn't change anything there. Rules of conduct. We changed a couple of things on here, because some of it was redundant, and I went over that in the work session, just trying to shorten the policy up a little bit. And a lot of things were redundant or subjective and unclear, so we did make some notes there, changed that up. And I'll just keep going unless y'all interrupt me.
Keep going.
Corrective action procedure, we changed that, because then the policy now applies to the manager doing that instead of village council, unless it applies to the manager. So the employees still have the grievance process through the manager unless it involves that manager, in which case it would go to you all. Same thing with the suspension termination and all that stuff. It's been applied to the manager now, not the council to do. We did add some more language in there about drug testing. It was kind of unclear when we would drug test, and we wanted to make sure that was cleared, any current employees or potential employees. Moving on to page 18. Didn't change anything there, I mean, especially all the manager, council member changes. Moving on to page 20. One significant change was in section 29, which is employment of relatives. We did make note after council many, a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, about this section should not apply in its entirety to part-time park employees. This would mean that any council member's family member and/or employees could have relatives that work as a part-time park employee.
Council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the last sentence in section 29 on page 20.
Okay, that will be, let's note that, and then when you move to approve, we can handle that at that time. Or you can do it individually, I guess. Whoever you wanna handle it, depending on how many changes we're gonna have.
You wanna just, if we get more changes, we'll...
Yeah. And if not, we can do, we'll have that noted in the motion to change what that addition, and we'll make it.
Well, would we vote on that separately before we, like, we voted on it now, then we vote to approve or not approve with the changes already made, correct?
Yeah, I would generally hold it off to the end and see if there's any to make one.
Well, they may have differing opinions, I'm not sure. Unless everybody's in agreement with that specific one, how do we know what the motion's gonna be, you know?
Yeah, it would be a motion to approve this change, you know, with or without. And then if it doesn't pass, then it'd be a subsequent motion to include or not to include that sentence. We can go ahead and vote on it. That was a shot, usually you gotta go through a law.
It's on page 20.
Well, I mean, y'all can see it, the changes. Basically, in a nutshell, that would, this would mean that part-time park employees could be a relative of an employee or a council member. And relative is defined as wife, husband, mother, father, guardian, son, daughter, sister, brother, grandchild, grandparent.
But we couldn't have any staff members, siblings, or that relationship in staff here in the office.
As it's written, no, not in the office.
Not in the office.
It's only in the parks.
It's only in the parks, so it's basically saying...
What's he wanting to remove? What sentence?
Just the very...
The section in its entirety does not apply to part-time park employees.
Last sentence in section 29. So it would just be that you can't have any family members.
Which is what...
Council or staff members could not, we would not allow, through our policy, would not allow any relative or sibling or spouse to be able... And it's debatable, you go back and forth about it, how it becomes a challenge for even though they're not directly over that employee, because it's just a park employee. I mean, sometimes we're just trying to give kids jobs for the summer and stuff, so I'm kind of on the fence on this just because of concerns down the road that this leads to. And, you know, not just, you know, the fact that we can't or can fill a position, but because it was park-related and didn't really involve any access to the staff building or access to files or anything like that, you know, that's where I was, they added this in, I think that's what we decided. You weren't here last.
I wasn't here for that one. Christina called me and filled me in on that, and...
So, basically, Bob is making a motion to strike that. Correct me if I'm wrong, and not have that as part, so it's just, it just doesn't...
The whole section is what it's just.
Just the last sentence. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to part-time employees, which would mean that, you know, part-time employees could be any family member of staff or...
Any employee.
Any employee, yes, sorry.
I was gonna say, with all this discussion, and there is a motion on the table, we probably oughta, wouldn't handle it.
Should the motion actually mention the wording that's being talked, that's being removed?
He said the last sentence.
You wanna redo your motion, Bob?
Okay, but I thought we were kind of in the discussion portion.
Okay, so we have it. Are you fine with the motion?
I'll figure it out, you're good.
Okay.
So are we gonna stop discussing?
Well, discussion's out there, anybody else wanna opine?
I think Andy was talking, and then Chaplin interrupted.
So just to repeat, council member remarkably standing motion was to remove the last sentence of section 29 on page 20, which states this section is, in its entirety, does not apply to part-time park employees.
I'm still on the fence about this one. It was, it's probably cleaner just to have no relatives, period, regardless of where it is.
Yeah, I have, I tend to agree, I, you know, in one particular case, it wouldn't bother me at all, but it's, it's what may happen in other instances that could possibly present a problem. That's my only stand, that's my thinking on it.
It's like, we're all happy now.
Exactly, but what could happen, you know, in five years?
Five years.
What ramifications to, you know, to make decision making?
I think where the point is, is it's really just a park member, and it's typically part-time, or it could be a full-time member, right?
No, just part-time.
Just part-time only, okay. So part-time park, which is, you know, there's always kids looking for jobs and, you know, we're just providing an opportunity.
So that's, that's what makes it hard.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.
Is there no other discussion? We'll take that to a vote. Further discussion? All's in favor?
I think you need a sentence.
There's no seconds on the council.
Yeah, do seconds. What's the other boards?
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's a unanimous vote at this time, so we'll strike that. All right, moving on.
Okay, uh, sorry, I was just thinking. Section 30, we just provided some more clarity on air non-safe work environments. Over the last couple of years, we've had several times where our water has gone out, power, electricity's gone out for several periods of time, so we didn't want, we didn't wanna make employees come in if we don't have safe water.
Really?
Overtime compensation, had some legal language in there. Nothing really was changed on 21, page 22.
Okay, 22, I got someone there.
Okay.
Okay, would you wanna do your speed, and then I'll ask? Sorry.
Overtime compensation, we currently allow non-exempt employees to use their regular, I'm sorry, to work comp time. Non-exempt employees would be those that work overtime, that aren't paid, like, Rohit, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting this mixed up. Exempt employees, we did allow them to use comp time for hour for hour. I got this mixed up in the last time, Chaplin, make sure I'm saying this correctly. Myself, for example, would be exempt. Rohit would be exempt.
Yes, and it's hour for hour. If you have the discretion, as a board, to establish that policy, non-exempt, you have to do the hour and a half. But for exempt, you could do hour for hour, you could do nothing. It proposes hour for hour. So if they work five hours extra for this meeting, they could have that as comp time.
Tomorrow, they can have five hours, they don't have to come in, okay.
Then, y'all had asked about making an accumulation maximum with the use of comp time. And y'all had wanted it to be done within the last, within the year cycle, but unfortunately, it's hard to do that based off of, you don't know what's gonna happen in December.
Well, that was my question, so will it be rolling?
Yes. So the way that I worded it was what I highlighted, and I said shall be used within 12 months from rolling. So basically, if I am working in December and I accrue 10 extra hours, I'm not losing it because the year is over. I just have to use it within 12 months.
Oh, yeah, but what if you get to like next December and you haven't used it, and do you continue to accrue?
No, it's a cap at 80.
Okay. So, okay.
It says no employee shall accumulate more than 80 comp hours during 80 days.
I know what it says, but that's, that was what I...
Yeah.
I didn't wanna make sure that it wasn't, okay, I got it.
That's the cap. So what we'll do is we'll monitor that internally.
So it will roll? So it could continue to roll every year if they don't use it? But it'll max out at 80?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, yes.
So it won't, like, they won't lose it at the end of the year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
It just can't go above. And you also have the, you're gonna pay non-exempt through comp time unless it's expressly agreed upon prior.
In overtime, which is the same rate.
And that's, that's the state law, before they work it, they have to know with the non-exempt employees, before they work it, they have to know how they're gonna be compensated. So it can be on a special...
You made a rate?
Was it a...
No, they have to know if they're gonna get comp time or overtime paid.
Or like, capped money.
Yes, and those fallback years, comp time, which is normal for governmental entity. Non-governments can do that.
Is it optional? Because way back when, when I used to work for NC DOT, we had the option to take it monetarily or comp time, because a lot of us, because we were landscaping, a lot of us chose to take comp time versus the money, but we had the option at that point. And I don't know if things have changed in 30 years, but...
And the sentence in there, prior to commencing the overtime hours, you have to agree. So the law is now that, before it works, you have to have an agreement. But there is the option for it to be agreed upon differently. But the fallback is it's gonna be comp time.
But it's gonna be budgetary-driven, so that, and that's the reason that we left that, that's the reason we left it where we had to get approval, 'cause we may be able to in fact pay the overtime, or we may not, based off of what's in the budget.
I got you, so that's what is really written, as whether it's time off or if it's actually extra money.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious, 'cause I remember way back when, where we had option to do one way or the other, but that was the state paying us, and they had a little bit bigger checkbook than we did, so.
So you don't have a motion, Ken, correct? So you don't have a motion, Ken, correct?
No, I just want, I just.
Okay, you're just clarifying. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay, everybody good on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, break time for nursing mothers, we didn't have that. We did add a telework policy in here, because we don't currently have one. And we are, with the COVID situation, is allowing folks to work from home. So we did add a policy in there that has to be approved prior to starting the arrangement. And we will, we will review it periodically.
I have a question on that. So is that, are we gonna keep that from here on out for forever and ever?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Or should you ask when there's a pandemic going on?
No, it would be forever and ever. Yep.
So it can be flexible depending on whatever happens.
But you have to approve it?
Correct. Yes. All right, and then we added some language in there about the classification and compensation schedule. And I want to make sure y'all fully understand this, because as it is currently now, we have a budget, we go through the budget, we appropriate the funding for those salaries. And y'all pretty much see those every year. With the classification and comp plan, that gives the manager the authority to hire and fire within that compensation schedule. So for example, and I'm just gonna use the clerk, for example. Let's say that that classification study was approved where his salary range was twenty to forty thousand dollars. And I'm just using that for, I don't even know what the numbers are. But that would give the manager the authority to hire within that position between that salary range as long as it's in the budget to be approved. I couldn't hire him at nineteen thousand dollars an hour, or nineteen thousand dollars, because it's not, that would be nice, wouldn't it?
Need that job.
Nineteen thousand dollars, because that's not what's approved in the compensation plan.
Think I have an opinion on that.
And I, and I couldn't hire him at fifty thousand, because that's not what's in the compensation plan. Just want to make sure y'all understand that, that that is a change. But we would make sure that it's within the budgetary amount that's.
So when you say the budgetary amount, you mean the compensation plan?
No.
I mean, the classification.
So at the beginning of the year, we do a, we do an annual budget. So let's hypothetically say Austin is here, he's working, he gets paid twenty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
We would budget twenty thousand dollars a year, because we expect him to continue his employment at that twenty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, but if he left and you had to rehire somebody, you couldn't hire somebody at thirty thousand dollars, because you have a budget at twenty thousand dollars. I got it better.
Yes, yeah.
Got it. Poor Austin.
I'm just starving over here.
Trying to get you a raise. They keep going down. You were making thirty, now you're, you're twenty.
No other changes on twenty-four, twenty-five that are substantial. Twenty-six, we did, um, we did have some changes here, so I want to make sure y'all understand that. We added the accrual rate for the vacation accrual. That wasn't currently in there, and just added it in. And then we also added some part-time employee benefits for people that work over twenty-five hours. Currently, right now, you have a lot of part-time staff that are working as full-time staff. Your definition of a part-time person is anyone that works thirty-seven hours or below. And those people aren't getting benefits right now. So, um, anybody that works essentially thirty-seven hours is really classified as full-time, if you think about it. I mean, forty hours, we're only three hours short. And we're currently not benefiting them at all. So we did add accruals for vacation here for those part-time employees. This is a component that we felt would add to the quality of what, what it is that we offer here from a benefit package, and to help those part-time employees that aren't currently getting that. That would not apply to seasonal part-time unless they're working over twenty-five hours a week.
Do we set the, who sets the thirty-seven hour?
It's in this policy.
Is that something we can change?
Um, we can change that. That's in the.
But it goes back to the budget.
It does, yes.
Well.
Seems like an awful lot.
Just for, for, for future note, um, I think thirty-seven, and I think thirty-seven is, is, is an unfair number for, for part.
Chaplain, the thirty-seven is also driven by state retirement system. It's driven by something, I can't remember exactly. Is it FLO?
I, 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 well, I'd be hard to believe that the state would be at thirty-seven.
Do you remember what it was? Because we would, we had talked about this.
Yeah, I thought it was a.
I thought the state, it was at thirty-two.
Yeah.
Well, that's where, that, that was all wrapped around the healthcare stuff.
Where can we put it at thirty-seven? Yeah, because the healthcare.
It's in section, look at page twelve.
Oh, but the definition.
Full-time, full-time employees, anyone hired to work.
Thirty-two, I think it is. Well, forty's a number.
And that's what's in the policy now. Thirty-seven and a half is what's in there now.
So I'm not looking to make a motion, I'm not looking to think. I think moving forward, I would strongly recommend looking into reducing that number to a something in the thirty-two range. I just think it's unfair. It's unfair how someone come in.
That's a lot. I agree. Okay, well, we can look at that separately and bring it back.
Okay.
Because I do think we need to verify with the state retirement. That seems a little high to me, too.
But aren't we given the benefits regardless? Like now?
No, no.
No.
I thought that's what this was adding.
I mean, this is what we're proposing, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We're proposing adding some vacation time to it.
And paid time off, paid time off and.
Probably not retirement or insurance.
And I'll get to that in just a second. But currently, right now, today, the policy that we have today, not the one that's in front of you, but the one that's active today, does not offer benefits, which is why I'm proposing it.
And trust me, there's a, I mean, there's a financial impact to it, and it's significant, but still.
And this would only apply, sorry.
No.
This would only apply to the employees that are twenty-five to thirty-seven hours. The thirty-seven plus is already getting it. So it only adds, you know, a few different employees that are twenty-seven.
I get you, yes.
Well, you're not, you're a part-time employee for thirty-nine and a half hours. You'll never score a touchdown.
Exactly. That's a, that's a lot. That's a high bar.
If y'all are okay with keeping it thirty-seven until Chaplain and I review that, then we can approve this based off of the thirty-seven. Then we can come back and change it if, if we find that it's feasible.
Okay.
I think I'm okay with that. We just need to look at it.
Um, is, is everyone okay with offering the part-time benefits at, at a reduced accrual rate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then the second thing is unused accrued vacation. Currently, we have it for ten days. I just put two hundred hours. Typically, two hundred hours is what's, what you typically see with local government. I think that equates to fifteen days. And then sick time, same thing that we just talked about with vacation for part-time employees. Same thing, we would let them accrue sick time at the same accrual rate. We're currently not doing that now. Any issues there? All right, uh, keep moving on, Christina. We had brought up the idea of voluntary.
I know, about right now.
Voluntary shared leave program. I did not get the vibe that you all were okay with that, so I striked that out. Uh, we can always talk about it later if, if the need comes back up, but I did strike that language. Insurance benefits, um, we added some language in here to clarify a couple of things. Um, and we also have to offer insurance to people that work over thirty hours a week at their cost. So that, that's part of the Affordable Care Act, and we added some language in there about that. We also cleared up some language on the retirement system. Supplemental retirement, we added that. This is a new one, too, on page thirty. Longevity pay, the Village does not currently offer longevity pay to any employees, whether it be part-time or full-time. And this is a strategy that local governments use to attract and retain high-quality employees. We added this in here to, for that purpose. Increased benefit package for current employees and prospective employees to encourage them to stay employed with the Village. Most people that look around will take their longevity pay into consideration. So this basically would reward any employees that are from five to nine years. We get a two percent increase as a bonus if they're here for five to nine years at one time a year. And it's within the budgetary constraints, obviously. And that number goes up the longer you've been here. That is new. Any issues with that? We currently wouldn't have anybody that would be eligible for it, but at some point we will.
So it's how much again? After?
Five years. It would start at five years.
Okay, five-year employee would be.
And it's part-time or full-time?
It's just for full-time, it's supposed to be. Well, you know what? We don't, it doesn't stay.
Doesn't stay.
But it would be for full-time. Uh, the Village provides a lump sum payment to.
Full-time.
Full-time.
We need to take out that park admittance situation, because we don't have any fees anymore.
Where do you see that?
Section three.
Oh, okay. So we'll strike section three. And then where it says Village provides a lump sum payment to full-time employees, we would insert that language there.
Um, for the retirement, um, stuff up there, this is strictly for employees, correct? This is not for.
Which retirement?
The, the 401K or the retirement plan with fifty-five, four, four fifty, whatever.
Four fifty-seven?
Yeah, the council can contribute.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just want to make sure.
Any, any issues on longevity before we move on?
No, but the tuition assistance, I do.
Okay, so this was, this was a, tuition assistance was a.
I'm fine, I'm fine with all of it. I just want to, instead of a year, I want to make it a year and a half.
Okay, and this was requested by employees. So where it says if employee is terminated or voluntarily leaves the Village of Marvin within one and a half years of utilizing is what that language would say.
I would like it to say one and a half.
And again, this is gonna be budgetary driven. If we have money to do it, we will. If we don't, we won't. This would basically, if, everyone's confused here. This would basically provide tuition assistance to any one employee that is looking to go back to school to further their career, that would help their education that applies to their current job. We would basically reimburse them after the course is completed satisfactorily. And as long as they're here for a year and a half after the course commences, then they can keep the money.
So it's just, is it a matching thing, or is it just a, we, we assign so many dollars and they apply for it?
Dollars, yeah.
Do they apply for it, or do they automatically get it?
No.
If they have money.
More than likely, probably what we'll do is put a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars in a pot. And whoever wants to use it, um, as long as the money's available, we would try to disperse it equally amongst.
Whoever wants to use it.
And it's, it's not like we're paying for their entire education unless it takes them five years to pay for it. It'll be a little bit at a time.
That's for continuing, continuing education, I'm assuming, not like a.
It could be, it could be higher, it could be higher education, why not?
Couldn't it?
Higher education.
To get their masters versus a bachelor.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, continuing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question on this. Um, I know that, for example, in the restaurant industry, McDonald's had, has a similar type program. But it's, that's what is in here and you're proposing. Is this something that a lot of, while you're experienced, a lot of government entities are doing? Is an offering? Is there some reason why we feel helped to do this? Is that that big of a benefit to somebody who becomes employed by us? Or is this happening to other municipalities, too? Just kind of curious.
Yeah, I have seen it in a couple of different places that I've worked. But this was a specific program that was requested by employees. So that's primarily what's driving this, is it was a request made. And, you know, if, if we are trying to encourage that positive work environment where we have highly educated staff members, this is, this is obviously a benefit that would help to serve that purpose.
Good with that, Bob?
I'm good.
My question to you, Bob, is how do you know McDonald's and all that kind of stuff? Where do you get this information?
I was feeling me Googling that. I got encyclopedia suffragists.
Okay. All right, moving forward.
That, that's all the changes. No other changes were made.
Okay.
So I've, I've recapped, um, in my notes, the changes that were discussed.
So real quick, I had a couple of questions. Number one, and I don't know if this gets stressed in, in our policy or personnel, but some personnel has to involve public meeting.
Correct.
And demands on that. And I, I believe that's all, we've talked about that, about appointments being necessary and not taking up the time of our staff members. So, because we, we've had times where it's, it's been all-consuming for whether you or other employees that is not beneficial for the Village. Is that addressed in here? Is that a separate?
That is a separate standalone policy that y'all have. I think it's called appointment policy.
Okay.
And it's something that y'all adopted a few.
And I remember that. It's just, it became an issue. But I just, from a, you know, sometimes it gets, it can get ugly with, you know, you got public and, and these individuals who we want to protect from a standpoint of a personnel policy. You know, they, yes, they're there to serve, but also that can get, it can be abused on the other side where they're coming in and making demands and stuff like that. So I just assume that's with the other policy, not the personnel.
It is, yeah, it's with another policy.
And, uh, and with these benefits, I think we passed the thing. So if you guys, for those looking to run for office in the next year, I think council is allowed to access the healthcare. Is that still in here?
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in the personnel policy, because council members are not personnel.
Oh, okay.
But it is a benefit that they could still access.
Yeah, just reaching out to those retired that doesn't have a, a plan and stuff. You do have to pay, pay the full amount. You just get access at the rate that all of our residents have.
And it does, and it does not affect the Village budgetarily.
At all.
At all.
Yes, it doesn't. It just allows them to join that plan and stuff.
After all, your legal fees might be a little.
Um, all right, so do you, if you have things listed that are gonna be struck, if we can make a, I think we can make a motion, right?
Yeah, the changes that I had were on page twenty, section twenty-nine. We would strike that last sentence in, in its entirety. On page thirty, we would add the term full-time to employees in the longevity section. And then in tuition assistance, instead of it being one year, it would be one and a half years. Those are all the changes that I have.
Okay, so someone's gotta make that motion, correct?
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the head revisions to the personnel policy as presented by the village manager. Now, you don't like that, do you?
Just maybe it's amended.
Just, um.
He said it works. Do it as a.
Just write.
If he likes it, I'm fine with it.
Go ahead and read that.
Well, I, I read it, but it's like, it's the revisions to the personnel policy is what the title says, but we revised the revision, so I didn't know how to say it.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, there you go, as amended.
As amended by Christina, our town manager.
Basically what I just said.
I think you did.
It literally was like what I just said.
So to approve the revised personnel policy as amended?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and I'm gonna call for a two-minute bio-break, if that's okay?
That may.
Close the paper.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting. And the next up, we had on the unfinished business discussing, consider approval of in-focus contract to hire a planner from February fifteenth to June thirtieth at a cost of twenty-two thousand four hundred and authorize manager to execute the contract.
So this is not in, we've already discussed in a previous meeting. We actually did a budget amendment a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago. We're just presenting the agreement here in front of you. The attorney's reviewed it, ready to go. We're just getting our final blessing.
I'm fine with it as long as we keep advertising and looking.
The second can't debate on that one. So this is sort of a six-month, not even six months, right?
Yes, and we did advertise, and we will have to re-advertise again when we have space for this individual. Because currently, we don't have anywhere to house a full-time individual if we were to even find some money to hire. Or a part-time, yeah.
Can't we just let them? Where were we gonna put them before, when we were advertising?
We, we had, the, the initial approach to this was we were gonna do a contract with virtual office space, where they would do it out of theirs. We brought it to you all, and you had decided that you wanted to put it out there for a part-time position to see what we got, and.
So where were you gonna put them then?
We had done with, we really.
What about Nancy says?
I mean, we can.
Yeah, because we talked about taking that and contracting that out, right?
We are.
But you're talking about getting offices as well?
Yeah, we are talking about getting offices as well.
And remind me in the timeframe on the village hall again?
Uh, we would hopefully start construction by the summer of this year.
And completion is?
Hopefully by Decemberish.
By December. So if we're six months with this person, that puts us within four months of village hall being completed?
Uh, this is the end of June, so that's.
Our plan would be to go ahead and re-up this contract in June, and then we could reassess at that point after we get in the village hall.
Okay.
We, we have some other issues that we're working on as far as office space that would prohibit additional, like, staff in here. Without going into medical details.
Okay, so what you're saying is, you're not gonna keep advertising and looking, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I just wanna be clear, I mean, we, we have sp- we have spacing issues right now with staff.
So, so you're thinking about looking more towards fall, start to look again for full-time?
Yes, yes.
Well, it, I mean, understanding your, your position here, I'm fine with that, I think that that, that missed a sensible plan, but we do wanna continue to try to find that full-time person, so.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, we will, I will put it in my notes for full-time planner in fall, so I do not forget.
I don't think you're gonna forget that.
I don't think so either.
So that'd be a full time?
Full-time, part-time, whatever we can find, but the agreement's there in front of you, the attorney has reviewed it, uh, ready for execution.
So we're gonna make the motion to approve the end focus contract to hire planner for February fifteenth to the, to June thirtieth at a cost of twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars and authorize the manager to execute the contract.
Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, discussion, next up, number four, discussion consideration of Union County tax collector and contract and authorize manager to execute the contract.
Sorry, I didn't tell him I worded that right. Um, so basically, this is a contract from Union County to hire them to start our tax collection services, as you know, our tax collector retired, uh, last month, we have advertised several different entities, we've got one application, two applications, I'm sorry, today, we got one this morning, um, none of them had tax collecting experience except for the one that we had this morning. Um, we have not, obviously had the opportunity to interview this person because we just literally got it in, but um, at this point, we are ready to move forward with getting Union County to start collecting our taxes for us, we feel it's a good time to move and switch to this. There is a fee associated with it, which is one point five on their collection, which is estimated around ten thousand dollars, um.
Okay, so read this, one point five on total collections, approximately six hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Six hundred and ninety, it's one point five of six ninety.
Of six ninety?
Yes.
So what's the one point one?
That's our valuation, the one billion.
Billion.
Yeah.
Okay, that was very confusing, because this makes it look like we're gonna, one point five percent on total collections, which would be about six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which that makes me feel like we're gonna pay six hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
The six ninety is derived from the one billion, so as that one billion valuation goes up, that's six.
That was very confusing, so we would be between ten and fifteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we're minus the salary, the, or minus the.
Right, right.
But I ju- uh, I mean, I just wanna reiterate that as that number goes up, that ten thousand will go up.
Right, well, cause they're collecting more money and we're making more money, so we're gonna have to pay more money and, yeah, okay.
And, again, many of the surrounding towns, whether because of staffing or whatever, they, they automatically have done this for a while, I've talked to some other municipalities, um, that do this, and, you know, it's, it's, to them, some of them looked at as like a wash, but it was something that was not having to be done on, on this end locally, where we have to man the position, if you will, so.
And we can try it for one year and see how it works, um, this won't start until July first, so we, we're still working internally with our current staff to finish out this year, which has been a little bit of a burden, um, but we're making do and trying to figure it out, but, um, this will start July first, and basically, we won't have anything to do with taxes for that whole year, and if we continue to move forward with that agreement, we wouldn't have anything to do with taxes from there on, we will at some point need to hire for an office assistant to do those type of duties that, that Nancy was doing that haven't been picked up and they're not able to be picked up by current staff, uh, and we are currently preparing a advertisement for that, and we'll be seeking to hire someone for that.
So just for the sake of just quick conversation, the, the people, public would be paying their taxes to Union County, I guess, to a Union County address or something like that?
Correct.
Okay.
That currently where they, anyone that lives in the Village of Marvin is paying Union County taxes anyways, so they would basically be paying their Marvin taxes and their Union County taxes at one place.
Yeah, and they would probably never see it, because it's usually in, built into the loan that's paid and, right?
It, it is, it would be built into, well, in the escrow, yes.
Yeah, escrow, usually that's paid, taxes are paid that way, so for most.
Unless you loan it out, right?
Right.
I do wanna mention that if, um, as we discuss solid waste collections, if that is something that we put on our annual tax bill and Union County is collecting for that, that will be a one point five percent increase that's associated with that cost, because Union County's gonna be picking it off, picking it up. Are there any other questions about the agreement itself, the process?
Somebody else will make a motion tonight? Anybody?
Why you're the, um, mayor pro temp?
Oh, that's why I get paid the big bucks? Okay, all right, so I'd like to make a motion to enter into an agreement with Union County for tax collection services beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, and authorize the manager to execute agreement contingent upon attorney review.
Further discussion, all's in favor? Motion passes unanimously, next up, discussion consideration of entering local agreement with Union County for waste, for water, wastewater services for thirty years and authorize manager to execute con- agreement.
Geez, that's really?
So, this agreement was discussed at the previous meeting.
I know. I wanna go home too.
This, uh, agreement was discussed at the previous work session, it was something that was brought to us by Union County unsolicited, uh, again, my recommendation is for us not to approve this agreement, the attorney's recommendation is not to approve it.
Even, I even read through the red stuff, and.
There's no benefit, and I think the, uh, assistant county manager acknowledges there's no benefit, um, so at this point.
Good salesman. All right, so you don't need a motion, cause we're not gonna.
Unless y'all want to enter the agreement, I, I don't need anything.
Okay. Any other discussion on, uh, council, Bob, nothing?
No, not at all.
Okay.
This is last y'all will see that unless they bring it back up.
Okay. All right, uh, next up is discussion consideration of waiving three quote requirement for street name blade replacements, authorizing manager, town management to execute agreement with signs at a cost not to exceed ninety-six hundred dollars, standardizing brackets for Canterbury Creek and Weddington Chase.
Okay, so this conversation has happened several times, um, basically, what happened is we have standardized our signs based off of our spec manual that was approved last year, and in that spec manual, we have a logo, the logo of the Village of Marvin. Um, over the course of the last, literally, year, we have been in communication with HOAs trying to get cost share assistance with changing out these signs, we had two HOAs to agree to cost sharing, uh, in turn, we ordered the signs and they came back much larger than the current brackets will hold. And unfortunately, we, we thought we were gonna be able to change out those brackets pretty easily, but that did not take place. Um, and the quotes that are in your agenda packet are, uh, five thousand dollars roughly for Weddington Chase. Did I say that? Well.
Here.
Yes, five thousand for Weddington Chase, roughly four thousand for Canterbury Creek, and, um, with the current staff load and all the projects that we're working on right now, we just don't have time to do an RFP for a sign vendor to have, um, future needs anticipated, in, in addition to that, we don't know what additional roads we're going to take on as we take on roads, or, or when we're gonna do that, because it's all based off of third parties, involvement, DOT subdivisions, that sort of thing, uh, in addition, we have contacted the vendor here and asked him basically what would happen if we asked him to guarantee tomorrow's prices at today's rates, and he said that he would have to inflate them today to, in, in order to ensure that the rates are, um, generated for the, the ensuing years, uh, another caveat to that is we don't know who's gonna be in business five or six years from now, so we felt the most important thing that we could do now is just go ahead and address the issues that we have with these two subdivisions, get it done, and we will just plan for future subdivisions as they come up. Um, the, the big thing to this is we would standardize the sign brackets to what you see in the agenda packet in your memo, so basically, it looks like a frame.
Right, frame one.
Um, Canterbury Creek is currently like that right now, except they have a little bit of a decorative scroll. And Weddington Chase is a little bit different, they're more like a hanging kind of bracket, I have spoken with both HOA presidents, um, I have got confirmation back from Canterbury that he's gone with it, have not got anything back from Weddington Chase, but the intent here would be to standardize those brackets for all subdivisions in Marvin as we change them out. HOAs may get a little upset about that, because they've currently paid for their existing post, but it makes it easier, more efficient for us now that we're taking over these roads to maintain a standardized bracket, so if councils willing to go down that road, that's, that's a recommendation we have at this time, unless there's other options that y'all wanna consider.
I'm fine with it, that kind of, it still falls in the fact that, you know, we've discussed the last meeting that we wanted to do this a little at a time, so it wasn't such a huge upfront expense, and I understand the whole pricing thing, so it makes sense to do, fight what we can right now and.
We are setting precedent in a sense that we would be, the villages would be purchasing this.
And it.
Correct.
It, we are setting that precedent, so that's something that we would have to plan for, for future subdivisions that wanna switch out their signs, uh, and I think Canterbury Creek and Weddington Chase, it kinda gets in the benefit of the doubt here, because we didn't realize this was gonna happen, so if, if future councils decide that they wanna do something different, I feel that we could justify that, but, um, at this time, I do feel that we're setting a precedent to do that for future neighborhoods.
Well, we're trying to brand Marvin, right, and this is a part of it, you'll know when you drive into Marvin and when you drive out, and that's, you know, it's, that's our, our mark, so.
And, and some neighborhoods are, quite frankly, okay with, with helping us, or some, it's an upgrade. For some, it's, that, it's a downgrade, so you're, you're stuck in the middle.
Right.
Your balance.
So what are you gonna do when Weddington Chase comes back and they're like, absolutely not, you're at, we have paid for these, you're absolutely not gonna change these out, you've got to be kidding me.
Well, that's a council decision, but they are our roads, I mean, we can change them out to U-channel, you know, standard galvanized brackets if we wanted to, obviously, we want the community to be happy and council obviously wants to go with what the community wants, but at some point, y'all will have to make a decision if y'all want to do the standardization, or if you wanna approach each individual HOA and ask them and gather input from all of them, that's, that's really up to y'all for.
And that's just for road signage, and I, I, I wanna bring in something else under that, but I'll let this get to the, let's get to, I guess, a vote if we're gonna, if that's what you're looking forward to.
It is, and this, just to be clear, we would have to do a budget amendment, uh, we currently do not have the ten thousand dollars roughly that we're sitting on to pay for this project, we do have uh, twenty thousand dollars in reserved fund balance for signs, my belief was that was for, uh, wayfinding and branding sort of thing, um, so I don't know if the full intent is there for that reserve, but this could be a, you know, a, a piece for branding, streetscape.
I mean, as much branding as I can think of, so.
I don't think you can have, fully have, have this conversation until you say your piece, Mr. Mayor.
Who, me?
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we're trying to standardize on everything, and I will tell you this, and in fact, I took a picture of it today, because we got noticed that in our neighborhood that we, we agreed to, and I don't wanna get into discussion, I just wanna get to a motion where we can put a pause on this until we can get a better look at this, is that um, the, once we take over a road, it is, we've all at, said, hey, in the policy, we're gonna put in speed limit signs, problem with that is a neighborhood like Firethorne, for instance, has spent all the money to upgrade our signs from the galvanized signs to the upgraded signs, we've changed the posts, we've changed the mailboxes, so we're doing that, but then here comes the Village of Marvin without even calling the HOA to ask the question, hey, we're gonna put up a speed limit sign, and that speed limit sign is a galvanized, and it totally looks out of place, and it looks like what I'd like to do is revisit that and ask her, because we can't individually say, oh, stop doing that, because, what I'd like to do is get a motion for this particular issue to revisit it, to say, um, uh, how we go about putting in speed limit signs, um, it, whether they want one, and I think we, we wanna encourage slowing down the speed, but also, if they wanted to look a certain way, then there would be an, maybe an understanding that they would be on the hook for upgrading it, but otherwise, we would pay for the galvanized sign, I took a picture of it before I left, it just looks odd, in fact, it was at one home that had four signs now in their corner lot, it was a stop sign, a post with a light, a street sign, that's three, and then the fourth sign was the speed limit sign, all of them were decorative except for our speed limit, which was galvanized, and it's in, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to standardize, but I think my point is the motion would be to allow Christina to take a pause before we're spending money and then having to go back and say, because the HOA did, never got wind of it, and they never had a chance to say, hey, we wanna upgrade this, that's all, that's all I'm looking for a motion.
Your motion is to stop putting up the speed limit signs and bring this back to the work session, along with the policy that we all voted on, so that we can revisit this.
Yes.
You wanna upgrade the policy basically slightly to include the option for the neighborhoods to upgrade their signs?
Yes.
Just so I'm clear, I think we're talking about two different things.
Totally are.
Yeah.
Well, you, you told me, I, I was gonna have this, this go, this.
So, you're talking about speed limit signs in spec manual and design, but are you referencing to stop this, um?
No, that's why I didn't wanna add this in, I wanted to get this through, the sign thing through of roads.
But I think, but I think you're talking about signs.
We're getting a lot of the agenda though.
Hold on, so we're, so we're talking about the, the brackets, right, and we're talking about the fact that we are now gonna go in and tell an HOA we don't really, these are our roads, we really don't care what you think, we're gonna put up whatever bracket we wanna put up.
Well, is it okay that we give them the same consideration with these signs, that they can pay for the upgrade if they like?
That's, that's why I'm saying, I don't think you can have this conversation without having that conversation, cause they kinda go hand in hand with the HOAs, giving them more autonomy to do what they wanna do on their dime, or not, so that's why I'm saying, I don't think we can have this conversation about what's on the agenda without having, finishing that conversation about the decorative street signs, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, if y'all want me to wait until I get Weddington Chase's confirmation back, I don't see why Weddington Chase would not agree to it, because we're basically upgrading their signs, as you had mentioned.
But you said they have a scrolly thing, did you say they have a scrolly?
Canterbury has a scrolly, we're doing almost the exact thing in Canterbury, but Canterbury has like a little scroll, but their HOA president has said he's okay.
Yeah, I'm totally, totally with what you're saying, Joe, and I, I agree.
Hold on, but, but, but I still think that we can't, we can't approve this without having that full conversation of how we're going to approach the HOAs.
Okay.
To do that.
So, I'll put it on the work session, I'll put both of these ideas on the work session.
I'm sorry, I just, I just don't, I just don't think.
We didn't wanna get too much into Louise, cause it wasn't on the agenda, but it's related to some of this stuff, so if we can maybe just put it on the agenda to clean up that policy and, and make a policy for this.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Totally in agreement with that, I mean, I, I think you got a valid point, and I'm super fine with it.
And just for clarity's sake, it is, it is a recommended, um, or it isn't approved, the U-channel is in our spec manual, so we would have to amend our spec manual as well, so we'll, we'll add all that stuff in.
Yep.
Pass it along.
Uh, there's not really been a whole lot of changes to what's been passed on, but.
Okay, all right, so no motion needs to be made, we're just giving you direction, okay, we're good, moving on. Um, discussion of village council retreat agenda.
So the agenda's going around the table, it's not really a whole lot of change from what's in your agenda packet, unless y'all have further additions that you wanna add, this is pretty much what we'll go with, unless staff needs to add anything additional, uh, just so y'all know that if you haven't heard already, our county commissioners, two of them are attending, uh, our sheriff, as well as our representatives, our state representatives.
And we're giving them so much time to talk, so just let them know that, hey, we're gonna give you, or how, how's that gonna be formatted?
That's, that was on my thing, we need to, we, I think we need to drive that conversation, because we've invited them, and we have certain things that we wanna talk to them about.
Absolutely.
And I don't need them to give me a rah rah, yay, whatever, I want to tell them why we wanted them to come in, so my question is, we need to have very specific questions and topics for these guys.
And if y'all wanna give those to me, then I'm, I'm more than happy to put those as part of the presentation, um.
I mean, I'm assuming you have like the gist of, you know, the roundabout, getting it done sooner, contributing the money, finding out how they can help us take over just new town road, getting it paved, like, I'm assuming you have all of those talking points.
Yeah, so what I tried to do was overlap some of the bigger points, I, I don't know exactly what time the representatives are gonna get there, cause you've been dealing with them, assuming around lunchtime, um.
Yeah, the coun- couns-, uh, commissioners are coming in after ten o'clock, right before lunch, um, so they're saying maybe ten, eleven o'clock could be in here.
I've tried to structure, and, and I have to create my own internal timelines for the retreat, but I've tried to structure. retreat, but I've tried to structure the items that I would rather them hear about closer to where you see them in the agenda. So that being, that being the Newtown Road petition, Powellville, financial losses of...
We want to make sure that they're there.
For those.
For that. And especially David Willis, State House Rep., and State Senator Todd Johnson because they're, so...
But if there's anything that y'all specifically want them to discuss while they're there, let me know, because right now it's just roundabout general discussion.
Right. And my thought is, is, you know, we got a new member who's just recently elected and maybe has a vision. Give him a few minutes to talk about what he sees, his challenges, and why he did what he did, and give them that opportunity. But obviously, we will, to your point, Kim, want a clear direction on how they can maybe help us with the roundabouts or...
And what we need help with.
And what we need help, exactly. So. And I think that's, that's fairly narrow based on what we've talked about in the past and...
It's a lot of roads.
It's usually roads and all that other good stuff, but...
And then about the retreat, has everybody given Christina lunch orders?
It wasn't close enough.
The answer is no. No one, not enough people's given.
I have.
I'll do that salad that you told me.
Send, send an email.
All right, email them.
Seriously, they, I mean, I need to know.
Text me.
We, I need, like, I have to...
Text me tomorrow.
You what?
I'm just going, whenever you guys are done.
We'll send another email.
Nobody reads your emails. I need, I need to tell Firethorne how many people are coming and we need to have the food order to them by next Wednesday.
Okay. So get your orders in. All council, get your orders in to Austin via email. Or text. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right, is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on agenda? This is typical agenda that we've done in the past, a vision statement. I would like to ask council to kind of maybe come to the meeting with a couple ideas on that five-year plan, what you'd like to see happen. Ideas are free, so it's good discussion.
Let's just make sure we wrap it up by four because I got plans on Saturday.
And I agree because she's going to be celebrating my birthday on Saturday.
Oh, is that what it is?
We're having a big party.
She doesn't know yet.
Did you get me, you?
Oh.
Yeah, invite me to my party.
Oh. I mean, that's what I meant. I have some place to be.
Yeah, I appreciate if it went into Saturday, so hopefully we can get through all this. And we have the time at the Firethorne till when?
Four.
Nine to four.
I'm sure, I'm sure if we get over someone before...
I think you guys finished early last year.
Here rank his members. Okay, moving on. If there are no more questions.
We've got a lot of talkers coming this time.
New business we have. Consider call for public hearing on installment fencing, financing for the construction of the new village hall to be held on Wednesday, March 10th at 6:30 PM at Village Hall.
Are you good with these dates still?
Yeah.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so moved.
Maybe a little confidence.
She wanted to say one quick thing.
Mayor, do you mind if I introduce Scott and David real quick?
Okay.
They've been on the call.
To record it.
Can y'all hear me? Okay. Great. We have two individuals. They just turned on their screens. Thank you so much. And on the top row, David Sheetwood, he works, he is, let me, I want to explain their role in this. So he works for First Tryon. He is our financial consultant. David is driving a lot of, and holding our hands through the local government application, local government commission application process. So we're asking them if we can borrow. So there's David. Hey, David. And then Scott Leo, right there, is our, is a partner over at Parker Poe. He is drafting a lot of our documents. So the public notices that you see in your packet, that is Scott, and that is his associate Andy, who's been driving this, who also do the deed of trust for collateral, collateralizing the village hall. And so I wanted to thank them so much for being here tonight, and I really appreciate the work that they're doing as well. I think that's Andy in the upper corner. Is that you, Andy? Thank you for being here, Associate at Parker Poe, doing a lot of writing for us.
Any questions from council, from these guys?
And you still need to vote on that, on that motion.
Thanks for letting me do that, man.
I'm still there at the motion.
Hearing done. What's that?
I'm still good with the motion.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
She did.
Okay. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for your work on this.
Did you call the special?
That's the next one.
Yep. And don't go away yet, guys.
Okay. Next up, we have consider a call for a special meeting on Wednesday, March 10th at 6:30 PM to hold the public hearing to adopt a preliminary resolution on the financing terms.
Yes, this is part B. So what you're going to do on 3/10 is you're going to have that, the public hearing commenting on the 1.8, and then also you'll talk about the preliminary resolution and adopt the preliminary resolution, which is something that is being crafted currently by both Scott and Andy.
Okay. Any questions from council? All right. I'll leave a motion to call for this special meeting.
They're moved.
Wednesday, March 10th at 6:30 PM to hold a public hearing to adopt a preliminary resolution on the financing terms. He's very particular.
I am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes. Andy?
Thanks so much.
Oh, you didn't know?
Thanks so much, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Next up, we have discussing, consider reappointment of Kelly Cates and Kent Renner to the planning board for his terms expiring 3/1/2024.
Okay, so Kelly and Kent do wish to be reappointed for another term. Paul Caffiello, his term also expires on the first, and he has, he has decided that he will not ask to be reappointed. He has been on the planning board since at least 2007, and he has been grateful for the time he has served. If council is...
He's been having an attorney there too, which was great, because he worked with my wife at Goodrich. She was an attorney, and it was nice to have him here. So he will be missed.
If council is okay, we will start advertising this upcoming vacancy immediately, and we can try to have you all send applications back by the work session. We already have one interested applicant, Parag Patel. He applied for the Board of Adjustment last year, and he said if a vacancy occurred with the planning board, he would be interested. So we'll give you his application, and whoever else we get by the work session for you all to consider.
Perfect. And then should we probably do like a Bob for Paul, since he's served so many years on a board?
I think that's, I think we can do that per gift policy. But we'll, we'll get, we'll get one.
And maybe we can even, instead of it, it could be done here, or it could be done at the planning board meeting, and one of, or a few of us attend.
Well, Bob can do it because he's the planning board liaison.
And, and so I just, I need y'all, I do need y'all to make a motion to reappoint if you are so do wish.
Yes. So I need a motion to reappoint Kelly Cates and Kent Renner to terms expiring 3/1/2024 for the planning board.
They're moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
No, okay, gotcha. Next up, we have discussion, consideration of circulating citizen...
I hope you skipped one.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry. Discuss and consider appointment of Jennifer Barbara to be Board of Adjustments as an alternate for the term expiring 3/2023.
It's 3/1/2023, actually, but...
3/1/23.
Yeah.
So moved.
And she is the only applicant.
Okay. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have discussion, consideration of circulating citizen petition for Union County residents opposed to event in apartments rezoning on Providence and Newtown out through the residence list that we provide. So this is, this is...
A third-party request to the residence list. Bill Loughlin is, that's his name, who has started this petition on change.org. He wishes us to send this out to the residence list. I'm curious as to how y'all view this, because it is a third-party use.
Right.
And you guys have let other people do this. You did let Gene Stowe use his, put out his information about his book and documentary, but we do this on a case-by-case basis.
So legally?
Legally is your database, but this is a zoning petition and, I don't know, you're going to start opening yourself up for more requests for more people that may be in opposition? I don't know the boards' view on this, but it's your platform and, and I think individual projects would...
I'm fine doing a resolution that comes from the village to oppose it, but I'm not sure that I want us to, every whipstitch to say, and then it's going to be like, well, you did it for that person, so why aren't you going to do it for me?
Have they already passed a resolution?
So I feel like...
Wesley Chapl actually has passed a resolution for this.
To do it on their website or list?
Two, they passed a resolution against this development, actually, based on the public.
They did, yes. They, they did. They told me that at Wuma, but to Kim's point, you know, what can of worms are we opening up if we allow, and it is for the greater good of the village, you would think. So it's like, it's almost like a, a call, what's, what's the purpose?
What's the, what's Wuma's stance on this? Just, just curious.
In general, other than Stallings didn't want to get involved in everybody else's business, but everyone there seemed to support, like Weddington certainly was against this development. And I, and that's why I reached out to them and said, this is going, this, the first meeting was going to happen before the Wuma meeting. So I reached out to Wuma and saying, let your people know that there's this Zoom call and about, so it was helpful from that standpoint. And one right away, you know, wrote the resolution, and then one chimed in, I'm not sure I want to get involved in other municipalities. But this, the Wuma was formed for, frankly, it was to kind of support more voices, better heard, especially with the county commissioner.
But I mean, I think it's fine if we put something out, that we, as the village, oppose high density, but I don't know that we need to be putting out somebody else's petition.
In case there's anything inaccurate.
I agree. However, it butts right up to us.
It...
And with as many donuts as we have.
I don't know. I just don't, I just...
Is that in our zoning?
But is there, is there a way to maybe kind of split the difference? Maybe Kim's point is like, we make a stance or a resolution.
You've already said it.
Okay, but maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Put it out again in the sense that, you know, making the community aware of what this guy wants, signing the petition, and...
I don't know. I just, I think if you're saying, hey, there's a petition out there, if you feel like...
Well, we don't have to go down that road. We can say that the village council has looked at this and at this time strongly disagrees with a plan for Union County to go forward with it, and then just put it out to as many. I think that's, because we are opening up a can of worms to the point of...
They're going to be out directly supporting it, right?
If there's a shortcut to that, I'm fine. The only thing is, I just want to be aware and let everyone else be aware that it, it butts up to us.
Right. So is this, is this in our encroachment area?
It's not in our annexation area, but it is adjacent to Marvin.
So ETJ?
Well, no, it's in Weddington's annexation area, technically.
Well, so Weddington's opposed it.
Right, Weddington's opposing. And the Village of Marvin council can take a stance on a rezoning that's not in Marvin.
Yeah, we, we should do a resolution for sure, if we haven't, because we haven't done one.
And we've already shared, there were two county commissioners at Wuma that happened to be there, and said, well, it's clearly, so when this comes across your desk to be approved and stuff, there's, I mean, it was clear from all of this.
And the village has sent out on next door and on our residence list that there was a public input meeting on X date, if you don't want high density. I just don't know, I just don't know that I, I'm, me personally, I'm not comfortable saying, from the village of Marvin, hey, here's a petition, you know, go sign it, don't sign it.
I totally agree. I totally agree with you. And if there's a, if there's a shortcut or a way we can circumvent that by doing a resolution or something, I'm all for it.
Okay.
But I just...
So let's do it and get one in the work session.
It's so in our backyard.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I don't want to, so let's definitely do a resolution and let's continue sending out.
Reminders when the meetings are, and that, that's all really government's force of public awareness that kind of, you know, now stepping in and promoting petitions. I don't know if that's our role.
Yeah. Especially because we don't know, you know, what, what, I mean, if everything's accurate on the petition, like, I just, it's, it's too much for me personally. Bob, what do you think?
Totally, totally, totally make sure it's on, okay? Totally agree. You know, I was referring, I was thinking in my head to Gene Stowe and, and all of the good benefits, what he was doing, and how it would affect positively, you know, Marvin, and yet we will force it on him. And I think this is the same thing in a different way. It's, it's promoting somebody else. But I love the way we handled it. You know, we made the public aware that, you know, you need to go to this. The fact that you say to the public, there's a, you know, a virtual meeting that's going to be on talking about this, you know, whole apartment complex, says already volumes. How do you feel?
Yeah.
Without coming right out and saying it and...
Yeah, and says, if you want your voice heard, we strongly suggest you attend these upcoming meetings that are public input meetings and stuff. I mean, that's probably...
We'll get a, a resolution in the work session.
All right. So no, no, no motion needed for that. And next up, we have discussion, consideration, circulating fundraiser email for Leukemia and Lymphomia Society out through the residence list.
This is another third-party communication request from a student. He is actually on the call now, I see. And if he would like to speak, and y'all would let him, I don't know if he's interested or not.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Would y'all be okay with him speaking?
Is the board okay with him? I'm okay with it.
That's fine.
All right. Go ahead, Aaron.
Oh, yeah. So how's everyone doing today?
Good, good. Thank you.
Very good. So what, what I'm trying to advertise is this event called Students of the Year for the Leukemia and Lymphomia Society. And what that is, it's actually a seven big fundraising competition between high schoolers nominated around the nation. Right now, I'm competing in the Charlotte area. And the best thing to do now is just spread the word and bring as much money as we can. And one of the first thoughts that came to my mind was, you know, why don't we start with the community? Let's, you know, let's make this almost like coming together to help other people for the community. So the best way to do that was to spread the flag that I created.
So it's, it's, it's a tough call because we're, we're, as government, I don't know if that's the role of government to play that part. You just saw it in the previous agenda item of someone wanting to put a petition. This is similar to that in a sense, but it's asking that, but I'll, I mean, we can put it to the vote, or obviously if there's a further discussion about, because we, I don't know if we, have we created a policy on this yet for...
We have a no contribution policy.
The policy is they ask you about these things?
No contribution, we mean.
Meaning that the village doesn't contribute to...
Okay, so we have a no contribution to any kind of fundraising events, which we've, you know, I think...
We did, I mean, we did it for Gene Stowe to raise money.
Right, but we don't pay, we don't, actually, that's the, that's the...
No, I understand that, but he's not asking for a contribution. He's asking for us to advertisement. What I just said was, we advertised for Gene Stowe, and he was collecting money.
Right.
Not from us, but from other people. So what's the difference?
So Aaron, first, I want to applaud you for, for stepping up to do this. I mean, there are a lot of people sit on the sidelines, and there's people like you that step up and, and do this. So I commend you for, you know, stepping out to do this and...
Thank you.
Have you, now, what, do you go to Marvin Ridge?
I went Marvin Ridge last year. I transferred to Charlotte Latin going into this year, yes.
Okay. Have you reached out to any of the other government entities to possibly do this as well?
I have not yet. I was thinking, since I know a lot of people in this neighborhood, they just be more comforting factor.
Sure. Okay. Well, again, I applaud you for, for taking this and wish you all the best in raising a lot of money, because that's, that's something that we all don't like to, if you've ever had a family member to go through it, it's not something you want to deal with. And, and so applaud you for doing that.
And what's your goal to get to, just out of curiosity?
Oh, $50,000.
$50,000?
$50,000, yes.
I, I will leave it to the board if there's any other questions for Aaron or, and what we want to decide.
So I know it, it seems that there may be some concerns with setting a precedent for fundraising efforts. efforts, and might I suggest an alternative, and that might be to, if council is not inclined to let him use that platform, to maybe send the information out to our community leaders, like our, our board members, our commission, our planning board, our Board of Adjustments, Parks and Recreation Board, and/or potentially the HOA presidents, and hopefully they would encourage some of their residents to do so, but again, I think the concern is setting that precedent and having to repeat that pattern each request that we get.
So would we send the letter on behalf, or we would provide him the information list?
I don't know if the list is a public record.
We can't, we can't give it out, we can, we can send, if you all agree, we can, we can send the same thing, single packet, to, to the HOAs, to our board members, but we can't give that list out, because it is not considered, it, it's a public record open for inspection only, not replication.
That's not what the difference is.
So Aaron, one of the issues, just so you know, in the past, is, is privacy, like when you sign up for getting village hall information, that's expected to be protected in a sense, even though that's been violated in some, some regards in the past, and, and we're trying to do everything, because one of the things that we've heard from residents, how did they get my email? You know, I mean, and how are they getting my info to, to give information like this, or whatever they're saying and stuff? So that's one challenge, the other one is, you know, we haven't really, I don't think as a board looked at something like this and set in precedent, so again, I'll leave it for council to kind of hash out and figure out how, if there's any way we could help you, because to Jamie's point, I think all of us applaud what you're doing, and, you know, you're senior now at Latin.
I'm a sophomore this year.
Okay, okay, very good, and, you know, a couple more years there, but you're a resident of Marvin, I assume, since you went to Marvin, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So that, that's the kind of the dilemma we have, and it's not that we don't want to support you, it's just that setting precedent, and then also understanding what the community is, expectations are, when they, they reach out to us to say, I want to get information from the village, is this considered government information? I think we want to, or we've tried to keep it within that frame, if you will, if that's, I know.
No, I agree, and we, again, we just have to be careful, because, you know, I could probably list 10 names with 10 different support that they want to give, and it's, you want to give everyone support.
Yeah.
No one's here saying that we don't support, you know, the leukemia and lymphoma society, or Aaron and his drive to raise money for it, or anything like that. So Aaron, I would, I would, you know, just say, you know, continue to put your foot on the gas on this stuff, and I know you're going to continue to move forward and do it, I think if there's an appreciation, the challenge that we face from a government standpoint of everyone and anyone that might want to come to us and say, hey, I'm a cancer, whatever, 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 and it's just, it's difficult for us to be able to when we shut it off, but I, I, like I said, I commend you to do it, and don't take what we're at, don't take what we're telling you tonight as a stopping point by any stretch of the imagination, continue to find different ways, continue to find other ways, like us or different from us, to continue to push this out.
Yeah.
And you're going to be successful, I see you, I see you raising that money, and applaud you for doing it, and you'll get there.
I appreciate, thank you.
Something I can give suggestion to you on a whole different level, contact major restaurant chains in the area, okay? Are there any, all, no, and what they will do is they have set up fundraising nuts, where everybody comes to their, you know, comes to the restaurant, a portion of proteins goes towards, you know, towards your, your link.
Instead of some, an event like that for Chipotle March 1st, so-
Good, good.
I just said Chipotle on that Monday.
Good, so that's a real good way, and it drives people, you know, it really brings us a, a, a community together, so that, that, okay, so good job.
I'm throwing in the brain right now, I still got countless ideas, I just don't have enough time to do it, because it's only seven weeks, about a whole year, then 100% I would get that, but, only seven weeks.
So your time frame frames, March 5th is, you're trying to get this all, all the donations by March 5th?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, that's the final day.
Okay, well, let me, let me offer you this, because I don't know where the board is going to go, but from a personal standpoint, I will commit to you donating something, but I do check with my wife before I make any kind of commitments on that, but you, you'll have a personal donation for me, for, for sure, for long record.
I can leave, yeah, I can leave my campaign link chat, if that's okay with you guys.
We'll have a chat.
It's on here.
And Aaron, they do have your information in the flyer, you have everything?
And it'll, and it'll be in the packet, and it'll be on the website, and like, all that, so people go through it, they can find it.
Perfect, well, I appreciate you guys just doing everything you can, you know, I mean, it's difficult when you have rules in place that say it's difficult to do this, but I appreciate you guys just considering it and thinking, you know, let's try to help them out the best that we can, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron, and good luck with everything.
Thanks so much, Aaron.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming here.
All right. You need to go home and tell my wife, it's a good kid, man, that kid's going to go places.
Awesome.
For sure, I mean, he's, he's on it, at that age, he's not even a senior yet, so. Next up, we have open topics, who have anything to discuss?
Nope.
All right, maybe touch on that. Second, Jay's agenda items, one, review action items on ongoing action item list.
Okay, so here's what I have, and Christina can add to it. Okay, so-
I'll go ahead, I got it. We're going to look into the Barcroft multiple occupancy issue, MSD retreat item, we'll talk about that in more detail at the retreat, we give you all the options, I will communicate to off-duty patrol about the no left turn, and to move their cars back.
Thank you.
Chappell and I will assess the 32 hours a week part-time employee for the personnel policy and bring that back if we see that it's feasible, we will order a plaque for Paul for retiring from the planning board, we'll send out information on Abington, reminders about when that public hearing is with Union County, we'll also communicate to the requestee about the third-party communication and let him know what we're doing, we will put a resolution of opposition for the Abington Apartments at the next work session, we'll send out another email on the lunch for Firethorn, so that can get that out to Mayor Protem on Wednesday, we will continue to advertise for a full-time planner in the fall, and we will table the three-quote requirement for streetlights and discuss peak limit signs and posts, and potentially spec manual at that time.
I yield back.
So just so you know, an update from the person who contacted me, or I talked to originally on that rental home, she provided a list of addresses of the homes, plus she did say, saying that the, which is, this looks like good news, is AH4R representatives were there waiting on the individuals to come back, they took pictures, so it looks like they're taking some action on a housing level, because I personally, with that issue, that when you're renting to someone, you've got to know who's in your house, and in this case, if there's, you know, that many individuals showing up-
I agree, I just don't know what we can do about it, so.
Comment on that.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
I'm like, nope.
All right.
Any ongoing action item list?
Yes, ongoing.
I'm good.
Anything else on ongoing?
This is usually my thing, but I'm good.
I know, geez. Council comments, final item.
I'm good, thanks.
Thanks, Kim. Bob, would you like to say anything?
Bob's good. Just kidding, Bob.
Bob?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Jamie?
I can't wait to christen the SS Marvin F-150.
Yeah!
Have a hotel gate party.
I was thinking about that the other day.
Now, thanks, staff.
Andy?
And law enforcement, you guys stay safe.
Yeah, I really don't have anything.
Okay, thanks, and then I, of course, have a few things.
Of course he does.
No, I just want to point out that-
He yielded my time to you.
Kim and I, Kim and I had counsel, coffee with counsel, and a couple of things for those listening online, we encourage residents to continue to come, however, the last time we had a developer, and also a resident of-
A non-
A non-resident of, in Union County, specifically from Providence downtown, so what's happened with that, and that individual has spurred him to get some sort of meeting going on with the HOA, and what we can do, and all this, I think, you know, it was very encouraging from that meeting, but what, just so you know, staff, we, I, we kind of frowned upon that we're not doing coffee with council for opportunities for developers to come in, in all fairness, but nobody was there, so we chatted with them, so all we could do is suggest that we, they get on the agenda and want to talk to us at a high level of what they're proposing and stuff, so.
And the land that they own wasn't even in Marvin, it was unincorporated Union County, so we were like, you know, we don't really have any jurisdiction over this.
They have not contacted me that way.
Unless they want to annex.
Anyway, but in the end, it was good to see people there, but still, again, encouraging all others to, to attend if you can, we're giving you two opportunities, evening, and also in the morning, so with that, I will ask for-
That's it?
That's it.
Really?
That's all I had, I only had really much to talk about. So that, I'll ask for adjournment of the meeting.
So moved.
At 9:57.
Oh, before 10 o'clock, baby steps. Thank you all.
Are we all's favorite?
There needs to be a vote.
Yeah, all's favorite.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passed, sorry, I forgot.